This is the Thursday, June 10th, 2010, meeting of the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. First announcement is our overhead projector screens are not working this evening. The agenda's in the entry for those people that want to get a paper copy to follow along with hard copy. And all of our votes will, if not unanimous, will be announced verbally. Could you call the roll, please?
Joanna Croft.
Here.
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Kenneth Burkhart.
Here.
Jeff Braun.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Here.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Moving on, on down our agenda, we have no minutes for approval, special order of business, executive sessions. Do we have any disclosures this evening? Do any of the board members have any disclosures to announce?
No, we can't do it.
Okay, can you hear me now? There are no disclosures to announce, so moving on our, moving down the agenda, there are no appearance requests, unfinished business, which brings us to our public hearings. Before we get into our first case, I would like to read the order of business for variances. The chair will introduce the case, the board will hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice, the board will hear a brief staff presentation outlining the case, not to exceed ten minutes. The board may then question the staff, the applicant will give his or her presentation, not to exceed ten minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests on the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. After the applicant's presentation, the board and the staff may question the applicant. The staff will have an opportunity to rebut the applicant's presentation, not to exceed three minutes. The board and the applicant may then question the staff, the applicant will then have an identical opportunity for rebuttal. The hearing will then be open for public testimony, each person has three minutes. After the public hearing, the staff, followed by the applicant, have the right of rebuttal. Then the matter rests with the board, the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. A motion has to pass, a variance has to pass by a majority of the fully constituted board, so while there are seven members here, the fully constituted board has nine members, so it will take a vote of five votes in favor to pass a variance. That brings us to our first case this evening, case 2009-124. The petitioner is Valerie Phillips, is the petitioner here. All right, you can have a seat just for a second, we're going to have the staff presentation. Could you, staff, provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was advertised and signed, and sixty-eight public hearing notices were mailed out for this item. We did not receive any responses from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a five-foot side yard setback encroachment to allow an existing deck and stairs to have a setback of approximately two feet at the maximum point of encroachment, which is an encroachment of three feet, or approximately sixty percent. There is an as-built of the property on page two, it's been reduced to fit it all on one page, and at the very top of page two is a little arrow indicating the encroachment. And on the aerial on page three, you see an overhead of the property, and you can see the house in the lower left-hand corner of the petition site, and the area where the deck and stairway are located. I point that out so that you will be able to see immediately that the deck and stairway are not less than ten feet from any other structures on other adjoining properties. Some photographs supplied by the department are on pages four and five, and the applicant has included some photographs of the interior of the house to demonstrate how the stairwell and deck tie in to the upper floor of the home. The purpose for the deck and stairs is secondary egress for the upper floor of the building. This is an old property, some of the structures on the property date to 1950, and it seems as though a horse use has been involved with the property for almost that same length of time. And I point that item out because it is indirectly related to standard one, which we'll get to in a moment. Although much of the property probably is legally non-conforming because of the age of the structures, we've not been able to establish when the deck was added, so we could not get it grandfathered in looking at aerial photographs from pre-1986. It is just not possible to come to a conclusion, a positive conclusion, that the deck was there and would qualify under the pre-1986 encroachment rule. So, that is the reason we're here tonight. Regarding the standards, finding number one, that there are exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. The standard is partially met, most of the structures were built prior to plating or zoning, and they appear to have been built around the perimeter of the property in order to allow a large open area in the center of the property for corrals and for horses. As I said, the use of barns and horses on this property dates almost to the first structures. We were actually able to find telephone book Yellow Page advertisements on that subject. Standard number two, because of these physical circumstances, strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship and deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. The standard is also partially met, decks are common on homes in this area. In this case, the stairs and deck are a second entry exit for the upstairs unit, and the applicant has supplied photos, they're on pages thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two of the package. Because of how the property was first constructed with buildings around the perimeter, the house in question is at the five-foot setback, so any legal-sized deck and stairway on the west side of that house is going to encroach the property, and that is in fact what has happened. Although it would have been possible to locate stairs and deck on another side of the house, that's probably not appropriate because of how those stairs and deck would then enter the house, which room they would come into. On page thirty, I believe, the applicant has shown a sketch of how the deck in question enters into the upper floor of the house. That standard is partially met. Standard three, that the hardship is not self-imposed, and the conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. This standard is not substantially met. The first part of that standard, that there is something peculiar or physical about the property that's caused the need for the variance, is partially met, as mentioned. It's not a true physical condition of the property, but the structures and their locations on the property predate the plating and zoning regulations and have caused any structure added to the west side of the house to encroach the yard setback. However, for the second part of that standard, the current owner purchased the property in August of 2004, and a non-conforming determination had been done for the previous owner in February of 2000. That non-conforming determination pointed out that the deck and stairs were encroaching into the property. So, it's unfortunate, but a minimal amount of research would have indicated that this problem was there, and it's unfortunate that Ms. Phillips has purchased someone else's problem. Standard three is not met. Standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The standard is substantially met, there are no structure separation violations on the property, and those adjacent properties to the west are all R7 and have a twenty-foot rear yard setback. So even if those properties to the west of Ms. Phillips were vacant and a new home was going in, they would have the twenty-foot rear yard setback, and there would be adequate building separation between Ms. Phillips and her neighbors. Drainage and runoff do not appear to be an issue for this property. The size of the deck and stairs and their location are not visually obvious from elsewhere in the neighborhood, and there have been no objections to this request. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code, this standard is substantially met, this is a dimensional request. Decks and stairs are common in the neighborhood and do not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality, that standard is substantially met, we've not identified any health or safety issues. In fact, the deck and stairway are a safety issue, as they provide secondary egress for the upper story of the house. Standard seven, the variance, if granted, is the minimum, that will make possible reasonable use. As mentioned, the house is already at the setback, so any legal-sized stairs and landing, which do require a thirty-inch minimum, are going to encroach three feet into the setback, and that is the case in this property. Decks and stairwells to upper levels are common in the area, so we see the deck as a reasonable addition. The department must recommend denial as standard three is not substantially met. However, should the board find for the applicant, we have one condition on page eleven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Ms. Croft.
Yes, I have several questions. One, regarding the existence of the deck and stairs prior to 1986, it is not conclusive either way, is that correct? Is it possible that that, the stair did exist prior to that, and we just don't have very good aerial?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, yes, there's a blur on the aerials, even with an ocular, you cannot really tell. If you look closely at the photographs, though, at least portions of the construction of that stairwell and deck appear to be newer. We couldn't go definitively with it, I'm afraid.
Okay, and then on that, the deck, we see parts of it in the pictures, it really is just a landing, it is not a deck that you go sit out on, right? It is just the required landing at the top of the stair to get into the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is it, well, is the second stair required, as in means egress? Or is it just a secondary?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, it's just a secondary, it's not an absolute requirement, no.
Okay, and then another thing is just to make sure, on page ten, I believe you, in department recommendations, it indicates a one-foot, four-foot, it's a four-foot encroachment into a five-foot easement, and the request for the variance is a three-foot encroachment. I wanted to confirm which one that was.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, I, the requests in the ad is one way. I bumped up the recommendation of foot, just because of the difficulty of the scale on this item. I didn't want to be allowing only a three-foot encroachment if it truly is a four-foot encroachment, so I was going to give her the benefit of the doubt there. I was a little bit concerned with the scale, because if you compare photographs that are in the package, along with the as-built, the as-built indicates, and let me see if I can direct you to that picture, just so we can talk about the same thing. The pictures on page four and five, you'll notice the chain link fence. That fence is supposed to be on the property line according to the as-built, and I don't think it is. I think it's a little bit onto the neighbor's property, because there's more than, well, the encroachment just doesn't look right otherwise. It doesn't appear there would be an encroachment if that fence is actually on the property line, so I think there's been maybe a small mistake made with the location of the fence, and I wanted to give Ms. Phillips the benefit of the doubt, so that's why I'm saying four.
So, then your recommendation is that we would modify that request, three to four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, looking at that as-built, I don't see anything that dimensionally ties the structure, either the house or the stairs or landing, to the actual property line itself, nor do I see any indication on that as to whether the surveyor recovered any property corners, and I wonder, typically that's required on these as-bills that we get as part of the application, is it not?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, more and more we're seeing as-bills, but we do not know the point of origin, and the paperwork is turned in without any new corners being located. I'm afraid that's quite common now. Does that answer your question? I do not know if that is an actual surveying requirement, it's not in Title 21 that they must set corners.
Right, especially if you just researched. Maybe Mr. Cars knows the law better than I do on that, but I believe that it does require a certain minimum level of boundary surveying to be done, and I'm not comfortable with the data that we have here to make a determination what the encroachment actually is.
Right, yes, I note this is an as-built from 1997, number one, and now, following up on what Mr. Vig said, I guess I'd key on the, I believe, the second part of his comment. I see no dimension on where the, any corner of the house is to that west property line, so how was that established in the first place to come up with this encroachment? I concur with Mr. Vig, I don't think that there's enough information on this as-built to make this determination.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman, you're relying on me measuring on the full-size as-built with a scale to come up with those numbers.
How did this variance come to pass? How did it come before us, then? Typically, there's a, there's a, an as-built then that particularly shows an encroachment, that either lending institution or realtors identified, part of a sale. How'd this come to pass? Because I couldn't tell based on this, and furthermore, this as-built does show the fences on the property line, if we're going to go off this as-built, so I think there's several questions here.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sometimes they sneak through, there's another case coming up where an as-built was not even submitted, so yes, I'm afraid sometimes these things do get through.
And how did this, I guess this is a question for the applicant. I, I don't know if I answered your question or not, Mr. Vig. Are there any other questions of staff?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to look something up about the requirements for as-bills, would you repeat that?
I'll give you a chance to look it up, if you'd like.
Well, the as-built was recertified last year, so it is less than two years old, and what I was looking for is, when the application is submitted, an as-built survey, no more than two years old, date of application with the original signature and sealed by Alaska Land Surveyor, plot plan survey, no more than two years old, essentially the same requirement, as-built survey, no less than two years, by date of application with the original signature, plot plan survey, no less than two years, as-built or plot plan drawing clearly showing current existing conditions. So, it's not a strict requirement from Title 21 that they highlight what the encroachment is. We try to ask for it all the time so that it is clear to us. That could be my fault, I've been intimately involved with this property for many years and knew what the issues were, so I will take the blame on that one. But I'm not seeing that that is, that it is called out in Title 21, that they must show that.
And, Mr. Barrett, as the norm for something like this, for us, do you rely on staff for measuring what these encroachments are?
Mr. Chairman, we always do measure, but is it the norm? No, I would say most of them do have it dimensioned, because most of the time, we're not as familiar with the case as I was with this one.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please, and state and spell your name for the record?
Actually, my name has changed, it's been named Phillips, but at the time, Valerie Phillips.
Would you spell that, please? Thank you, Ms. Phillips, and you have ten minutes for your presentation, and could you please, you must find that all the standards have been met, so if you'll, your presentation will be geared towards the seven standards.
So, that would be primary number three, because that's the one that's not, not.
It's up to you how you want to present.
I would consider that to be the most important one, so that's what I'll begin. Because number three is the one that's not, not, and if you guys could please help me out on that page, I'm looking right here.
Zero, zero, eight.
So, the question here is that, was this stuff imposed? And the condition is that it had to be something to do with the weight of the lot, or the shape of the lot, and I would have to say that the only thing I can address is that the building isn't everything that already there at the time when I purchased. And although I was aware that the deck was non-conforming, I knew that the option for me was to do a variance, that would have been the only thing for me to do, or maybe moving yourself with a door that led to a big drop. So, the variance is, I'm here pursuing. And the others, do you have questions? It appears to me that my neighbors are not at all affected, nor do they care, because nobody responded. And as far as the departments, they all said they had no comment or no objection, so I would say the only condition is that the deck was there when I bought it. I have to have something there that is moving in size to get me at the back door, since neither door does exist, so I request for the variance, so that I don't have a drop down to my back road.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
That's it? You have questions for the document?
Well, we'll find out. If you'll hold on just a minute, Mr. Braun.
Thank you, Mr. Cars, can I ask the petitioner what your current last name is, and would you prefer to be addressed?
Prince. Ms. Barrett?
Yes, please.
P-R-I-N-C-E.
Okay. Ms. Prince, just to follow up on Chairman Cars's earlier question to staff, how did this variance came to pass, and why are you here tonight?
I'm here because although I had a condition in this permit for the equal activities, the equal activities were changing, and we wanted to add a cavity of space so that we could provide equal assisted activities for those with developmental delays and learning disabilities and such, and needed to have a building to do that in the winter, and then the deck issue became a bigger issue than it was, and it was just my back door. So, that's why I'm here.
Mr. Burkhart.
There is another entrance on the opposite side of the house and stair there?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of the stair coming off the dining room there, it would be a relatively simple matter to take out the door and put a window in its place, right? I guess one of the things that we have to find, and one of the things that I'm struggling with, is that standard seven, I believe, is that it has to be the minimum variance that makes use, a reasonable use of the land, and in my mind, I'm thinking that if exiting is met by having a single exit from the building, I'm an architect, I lived at one time in a zero-lot line in town, that only was a two-bedroom, only had one exit out of it, I know that that's, meets the minimum requirements of the code, is that you could simply remove that stair, put a window where the door is, and you wouldn't need a variance from us at all.
Okay. I'm not going to argue with you, you're the architect, so you know what the rules are. The only thing would be that that moves in with one exit and a second exit certainly would be safer.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the petitioner? As a follow-up, Ms. Prince, the, do you know how long that the door has been in existence? I know that we've had discussion about the deck, but that door itself, are you aware that that was ever added later? Any idea?
In my research, I can't remember exactly what year this went back, but at first, this was a one-story building, and I couldn't tell if there was a back door or not, but then it was raised up to make it a two-story duplex, upstairs and downstairs, and so it is entirely possible that that back door was there, then it was, it was at Grand River. I don't know a hundred percent for sure when that door was added.
Do you recall when the house was lifted?
Thinking in the seventies.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, if you have a seat for a sec, we will open this for a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this case? Anyone at all? Last chance. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Ms. Prince has indicated she has no rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Mr. Braun, you've indicated, okay.
Would you like me to speak?
Yes, please.
At least put it on the table. In case 2009-124, I moved grant a variance in the RO District, a variance from AMC 21.40.130, which requires a five-foot side yard setback for residential structures to allow an existing deck and stairs to have a setback of one foot at the maximum point of encroachment, which is an encroachment of four feet, or eighty percent, according to Department Recommendation Number One, on page eleven of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. And Ms. Croft, you have indicated you would second?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Braun, would you speak to your motion, please?
Certainly, I'll preface going through the findings with a short discussion, I guess, a question that was raised by Mr. Vig and Board Member Cars. I presented a motion, and given the fact that I have confidence in supporting it based on the information at hand, but understand if there's still concern over the quality of the as-built, that perhaps a request to sustain, or rather, push back the motion in lieu of a new as-built with adequate information is understandable. I'm in agreement with staff on finding one, and appreciate the inclusion of the argument of the use of the property and location of the structures, and nearing historic placement of those structures to allow for equine use of the property. I'll carry that argument through, actually, to standard three in just a minute. I also agree with standard two, in that it is partially met, but key on the fact that any legal-sized deck would likely cause an encroachment, and then also the argument, the cost would create undue hardship, both of those elements are essential to finding that standard two is at least partially met, if not fully met. Moving on to standard three, which is the crux of what we've all been discussing, I guess, I... I can fairly easily find that standard three is at least partially met. And in the aggregate, that's enough for me in looking at the other standards to support the motion I presented. As in standard one, staff has brought up a fact and the petitioner has confirmed the fact that the use of the property and the date of those structures are, in a sense, one with the land. And it's fairly clear that part A, as staff has commented, is agreeably met. Part B, as to whether or not the need for the variance is a word beyond control to petitioner, certainly it looks like the petitioner did buy into a problem, and that is unfortunate. Let's hearken back, however, to Mr. Marsh and his call of where's the harm and should we, you know, do what, bring out the chainsaw? I don't often hearken back to that argument, but in this case I do because I don't see harm here. And so much so, in fact, I'm willing to support the motion on the grounds that it is a hardship. It is perhaps inconvenience, severe inconvenience, that overwhelms the fact that the petitioner did buy into the issue. Moving on to standard four, I agree that this is substantially met and again point out the fact that there appears to be no harm here. The neighbors have a twenty-foot rear yard setback and the impact is essentially non-existent. I'm in agreement with staff on standards five and six and point out in standard seven that reduction in size of a deck might not meet current code. For those reasons as stated, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Croft.
Yes, I mean, I've had difficulty with standard three, and so I'd like to talk about that. I think upon reflection, I do believe this is at least partially met. I do believe that we don't have sufficient evidence to believe that there was not a second exit from the structure predating nineteen eighty-six. And so I don't, and if that is the case, then this is tied up very much with standard one and this is a condition of a structure that predated zoning, in which case then that would not be a, that would be a non-conforming use and would be allowed to stay. I also was, in terms of about the no harm, I believe later in the packet, it even says that the closest structure on that adjacent property is fifty feet away from the property line, not just the twenty feet that's required for a setback. So we really do have a large, a large distance between the two structures. And as to standard three on the, you know, conditions and circumstances not merely constitute inconvenience, I do believe it is, it would be easy, Mr. Burkhardt is correct, to replace that door with a window. But I think that having a second egress from a second-floor residence is always something that would promote safety. And in looking at the floor plan, that does seem the most reasonable place for the second stair. So in that sense, I don't believe it's just an inconvenience, I think it is a matter of safety. So for those reasons, I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Burkhardt.
I don't intend to support the variance request. I don't think that standard three is met, that the prior non-conforming determinations from before the property owner purchased the property, I think it was a known condition at the time she purchased the property. And that legally, I think, we're told that in terms of hardship or not being self-imposed is that you consider the whole chain of ownership there. And it's not necessarily, self-imposed doesn't start when the current property owner purchased the house. If that was the case, then a variance would be extinguished with when somebody sells a property. The variance continues on down the line in terms of property ownership. And so the responsibility for a condition also continues back into history. And the other one that I'm having trouble with is the variance granted, is the minimum variance grants that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. I think there is a very reasonable use of the land in terms of the multiple buildings on site, that it fully meets the legal exiting requirements. Bedrooms even on the second floor have egress windows for sleeping rooms. I guess in this case, my conscience tells me that, you know, we ought to be taking a look at these standards and weighing them, that I could see where a second stair would enhance safety. But here, to say that a variance is required to make possible a reasonable use of the land doesn't make sense in my case, in my thought that a reasonable use of the land by eliminating the stair and the door and replacing it with a window is maintained.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Are there any other comments by any board members? Anyone at all? Mr. Vig.
Well, it's maybe the engineer in me, but I have a, I have a problem with having some data in front of us to make a decision off of which by inspection is conflicts with itself. By that I mean that the fence is shown on the property line on the asphalt, which if that's the case, the photographs would appear to be such that perhaps there's a five-foot setback there. I can't tell. And I'm a little bit uncomfortable making a decision based on a piece of paper that's not complete. And I sympathize, empathize with the petitioner's situation in wanting to resolve it, but I don't feel comfortable knowing exactly what we're approving.
Well, what we have done in the past is, the public hearing is closed, we can request, and Mr. Barrett, I'm asking as well, we can request additional information from the applicant. If the board so chose, requesting this additional information, is that correct? Mr. Bart?
Mr. Chairman, we could require the applicant to postpone a month, require the applicant to contact the surveyor and have him resubmit with the, everything re-verified and the encroachment distances called out on the asphalt, certainly.
And I guess I'd, maybe if you want to perhaps make a motion for us to have further discussion about this. Mr. Vig?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, in the case two thousand nine dash one-two-four, would move that we postpone the decision on this case and ask the petitioner to contact the surveyor, prepare the, prepare the asphalt and recertification and request that the necessary information be located and dimensioned and returned to the board for rehearing if necessary.
Could I have a second, please? Mr. Burkhardt has indicated he would second that motion. And then, Mr. Vig, you've spoken to, would you care to speak in order to that motion?
I don't think there's anything else to say. Thanks.
Mr. Burkhardt?
I remember when Mr. Walsh was on the board and he's mentioned, had mentioned many times that in terms of standards for asphalt that the surveyor can make a number of different choices on how and what to dimension. And sometimes we get asphalt that are lacking critical information. In this case, I don't think it's necessary for me to make a, to make a decision here. I guess I do think that staff in this case was also relying upon the prior non-conforming determinations. Maybe there was a better asphalt back then, but that's probably not the case since all that we're seeing is what's been recertified, you know, prior. But it's not unusual that we don't get all the information that we need. And I think it's good to, once again, to mention to staff that when staff is taking in variance requests, we'd appreciate it if they'd be more diligent in looking over the plot plans and make sure that they do have all the relevant information. But I do plan on supporting Mr. Vig's motion.
Are there any other comments? And I, just to be a little bit more specific, what I would like to see on this is a specific dimension from the nearest property corner of the house on the west property line to that property line, as well as the dimension of the existing deck, so that we can quantify that encroachment. And I would just like to follow up, that based on the photos that, because I think it is, that the applicant or staff presented us, that there's a dimension, I mean, it appears that there's more than five feet of separation from that deck to that fence. And if that's the case, there may not be any need for this variance. So I would be supporting that, I would be supporting Mr. Vig's motion as well. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition to that motion?
I oppose the motion. I'd call for a vote.
Okay. With that, could we please have a vote? Sorry, technology.
Go ahead.
That motion passes by a vote of six to one.
And for the record, voting in favor, Joanna Croft, Timothy Vig, Dean Carrs, Kenneth Burkhardt, Jeff Braun, and Ann Denny. Opposed, Joshua Fink.
And that brings us to our next case, which is two thousand ten zero-five-two. The petitioners are John Reese and Sandra Stevens. Are the petitioners here, they've indicated they are? Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case was advertised and posted, fifty-one public hearing notices were mailed. We did receive one in response. It expresses, I guess I could characterize it as some mild concern for the request. The drawing on page three, I will point out to you, is not an asphalt. It is lifted from the plat back in nineteen eighty-five. The stream, the GPS data points, the flood zone, the twenty-five-foot setback from the stream, those were all placed on the original eighty-five plat by Watershed Management. And then Mr. Steele drew in the fifty-by-eighty footprint for the house. The test holes were also, the test holes for the septic system, those were also GPSed by Watershed Management. They are confident that the drawing is quite accurate, but again, it's not an asphalt. This is a request to place a house within the front and rear yard setbacks adjacent to the west side yard setback and within a foot or two of the twenty-five-foot stream setback. The lot is a legal and conforming R six property. However, you do have to add in one-half of the abutting right-of-way in order to get it to the legal size. It's relatively level, it's vacant, containing natural vegetation. Rabbit Creek is the backyard lot line in nineteen eighty-five when the property was subdivided. The three lots that are along our own lane in this point, if you look at the parcel map on page two, you see the petition site and then a property to the east and another property further east on that one. Those three properties were all platted out at the same time in nineteen eighty-five and were all given the creek as their backyard lot line. Regarding the standards, standard number one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, et cetera. The standard is not substantially met. The lot is a legal and conforming R six property. There is a very slight slope to the property and there is a drainage problem associated with the property, probably because it is not very well sloped. And also that properties across the street do have quite a bit of slope to them, so they drain downhill across our own lane and onto this subject property. That is a limitation somewhat right now, but that can be addressed during permitting when the ground is cleared, filled, and graded in preparation for a house. So we do not see those as physical circumstances resulting in the need for the variance. The stream is an obvious physical circumstance, but it also is not related to the need for the variance. The stream setback is twenty-five feet, but that setback is completely within the fifty-foot rear yard setback. And as a man-made condition resulting from the plat in nineteen eighty-five when the stream became the rear yard lot line, it's a human-caused condition. It is not truly a physical condition of the property. Someone made a conscious choice to have the stream as the rear yard lot line. Standard number two, because of these physical circumstances, strict application of the code would create an exceptional undue hardship and deprive the applicant of common enjoyment rights. The standard is not substantially met. Again, there are no physical circumstances directly related to the need for the variance. The proposed footprint and size of the house are simply too large for the buildable area on this lot. The lot does have sufficient size for legal development and some of the development issues, such as drainage and placement of the septic system, can be addressed during clearing, filling, and grading in preparation for a home. In nineteen eighty-five, the plat, again, which is in the parcel map on pages two and three, show that all three lots were created at the same time. And it appears that the subject lot tonight was slightly sacrificed in order to make the other two lots to the east a little bit more buildable. Of course, that's just, that's just a guess, but in looking at the sizes of the properties and how they're oriented on with the stream as their backyard, it just appears that someone deliberately made lot, this lot, a little bit smaller in order to make the other two a little bit larger. Standard number three, that the hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The standard is not substantially met. Part A, based on standard one, there are not sufficient physical conditions relating to the need for the variance. And part B, the lot was platted in eighty-five with the creek, zoning district, yard setbacks, and other development limitations already in place. So again, a buyer would be buying into a known condition and should have been aware of the limitations and yard setbacks at the time of the purchase. Therefore, the need for the variance is a result of the actions of the applicant. Standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect use of adjacent property. This standard is partially met, and I think we're being generous on that, if I might editorialize a little bit. The structure footprint shows that the house is well within two yard setbacks, the front and rear. The footprint is within a foot or two of the stream setback and construction and ongoing house and yard maintenance will almost certainly in the future disturb that twenty-five-foot setback. The property is also susceptible to stream flooding. It is well within the one-hundred-year floodplain. And although that is not a variance issue, being in the floodplain can cause problems for both your up-and-downstream neighbors. However, there are no structure separation violations, so we are giving this standard a partially met. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. The standard is substantially met, this is a dimensional request. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect health, safety, and welfare. Unlike four, which was partially met, this standard is not substantially met. The impacts, potential impacts to the stra- The impacts, potential impacts to the stream, the location of the septic system within the 100-foot stream setback, and potential flooding by having the structure located in the 100-year floodplain do pose very real problems in the future to up-and-downstream properties. And standard number seven, the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the property. The standard is not substantially met. Total construction, according to the application, is going to consist of a house, garage, and deck. There were no floor plans of the house submitted, but the applicant, in the verbiage of the application, was indicating a 1,500-to-1,600 square-foot home on a 50-by-80 rectangle located toward the west end of the lot. The application states that the house will take up approximately 30 feet of this 50-foot depth, which appears to mean that a 20-foot-deep deck is proposed. 20-foot-deep deck does not appear to be a reasonable addition to make use, or to make a minimum variance to make a reasonable use of the property possible. A smaller combination of deck, home, and garage could be constructed within this area of the lot. Construction into two of four yard setbacks and placing the structure adjacent to a side yard setback, which is an issue in itself, and only a foot or two from the stream setback is not a minimal request. As standards one, two, three, six, and seven are not substantially met, the department must recommend denial. However, there are conditions on pages 10 and 11, should the board find full approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there questions of staff by the board?
Mr. Barrett, I do have a question. Regarding the discussion on standard number four, there was mention about the ongoing house and yard maintenance disturbing the 25-foot setback, the stream setback. Also, the house construction, should the, should those variance be granted, if they're showing building right up to that setback, you know, the excavation for that foundation is probably going to be five feet outside the house itself, is, what is allowed within the stream setback?
Mr. Chairman, nothing about you just mentioned is allowed within the 25-foot stream setback. There are certain uses, and those are called out in 2145 to 10 of the complete list of permitted and prohibited uses, but essentially, the digging out in preparation for construction, clearing, significant tree and shrub removal, none of that would be allowed. Now, based on the drawing submitted on page three, it is the rectangle, the building, excuse me, the rectangle within which the structure will be built. So if the applicant would commit to a smaller house, it might be possible that he can avoid at least five feet of that, adding five feet to the two-foot separation that is shown, but that's just conjecture on my part. We're assuming that the house is going to be one to two feet from the stream setback. And in the future, as trees begin to grow and are adjacent to the house and the setback, he's not going to be able to remove them if they are actually within the setback. So that's why we're so upset about that particular setback. Sorry I ran on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Burkhardt?
Yeah, I'm looking at the request on page one, and they encroach the rear setback by up to 10 feet, a setback of 40 feet, but that doesn't appear to match with what's on page four of the packet, which seems to be indicating that they're requesting an encroachment of 25 feet into the rear yard setback, up to the 25-foot creek maintenance easement.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burkhardt, that was the drawing originally submitted by the applicant before the stream was mapped. We're going off the drawing on page three. I should not have put page four in there. I should have just removed that for the confusion factor.
Okay. So that the request on the front page is accurate and describes the 50-by-80 foot footprint on page three?
It's as accurate as a non-survey can be. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff by the board? See, none. Could the applicant come forward, please? And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Reese, R-E-E-S-E, and this is my wife, Sandra Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. And you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and again, we must find that all seven standards are met, so if your presentation will be geared towards the seven standards.
Right. I think Mr. Barrett was talking about with a problem on the onsite, you know, of the as-built. We've got two in here. There's actually four or five in here, because I was trying to get it done fast, and I used the little map from the, of course, from the 84 platte, which is off a little bit, because the creek moved, plus I don't think it was accurate completely in the beginning. I used the very recent septic tank engineer report, which actually started from the same place, but the engineer has current measurements in it. I tried to do this backwards. I said, let me find out how much room I can build in, and then I'll get plans made that would fit in there. I found out, I didn't know about 50-foot setbacks. I thought the setbacks in R6 were 25 feet. I knew about the 25-foot creek setbacks, so I've never thought more about it. When I took the paperwork in to get the blueprints done, the drafter said, what about the 50-foot setback? Because this is a skinny lot. This does not meet the 150-foot minimum width. And she called somebody at the city and so on and so forth. I left paperwork there. I came down planning and talked to her, and she said, go talk to the Venice people. He was a nice young man. Explained how variances work. Gave me the paperwork. I told him my story. He said, it seems to me like you've met all seven of them. Here's the paperwork. Decide what you want to do. So of course, I did it. This is a funny-shaped lot. It's a skinned lot. It's a little bit over 100 feet wide, where a house should be built, is the appropriate place to build a house. It's next to 88, who's a parkland, where there's no neighbor in that direction. It's next to the creek, and it's probably 200 or 300 feet, and over a huge hill to the next residence there. It's basically in the corner, no effect on any humans, at least, to the west or the south. To the north, across, the radiance went there, of course, at the park, right at the spot. The guy across the street is the guy that emailed the comment that's sort of negative, but whatnot I have. Signatures from neighbors saying this is okay. Should I give this to be part of the record?
You can bring those forward. We will have to keep those for 30 days as part of the file, so as long as you're willing to submit those and...
Sure. And also have the affidavit of posting. I don't think that's an issue.
We'll bring those to the front so they can be logged in.
My wife and I went out last night in the mosquitoes and got those signatures. The, there's two pages, the one with most signatures that bottom signature that has B3 on it, or B2 on the side of it, but unintelligible signature is Robert Cahoon, the guy who made the only comment. He thinks it's a good idea, because we sat out there and actually doing what I was up to. I've known teaching of building a 4,000-square-foot flat house on that thing. I wondered if inside there were the options, figuring out the ideal place to put it. I don't want a 20-foot deck. I mean, I don't think I said that anywhere in there. This is a misunderstanding about my application. Of the maps about the funny shape of this, Waterway Management went out with their GPS stuff, two people, twice, and did, you know, flagged the stream and the creek, and this, that, and the other, and then came up with, you probably have the colored map of that with the various colors on it. It's in black and white in, it's page, page three. Is that in color or black and white for you?
It's in black and white.
All right. Then you're missing part of it.
We have additional, hold on. Was it part of the photos? Oh, yes, we have in color, yes.
So the yellow outline is the, I think that's supposed to represent the 1984 shape of the lot. I'm pretty sure that's what it is. That shows how this creek has kind of moved, assuming it was accurate in 1984. The creek has moved back and forth a little bit, and it's a little bit closer there at the narrow part of the lot. I don't know why Waterways Management had to go back twice. I talked to Kristy Vissach about it. I think she was there at least one of those times, and she described some things they were doing, and I had some questions about it. I didn't ask her why they had to go back twice. There is a serious problem with this. I thought, you know, this is great, they're using technology, it must be accurate. Two major problems with it that really confuses the issue, and maybe that led to a really negative response from staff. First of all, if you can see point eight, which is this bump in the edge of the creek, that bump is the edge of the creek that's closest to the test hole up here, which is the test hole that worked for the septic system, onsite septic. Kristy told me she measured that at 90 feet. I tried it by myself, just wanted me and I measured 88, so the test hole is 90 feet from the edge of the creek. If you look at the 100-foot line here, it's completely outside the property line as it passes that test hole. That's not correct. And I figured out last night that this property line on this map is about 25 or 30 feet off. It's really north 25 or 30 feet. So we've got some kind of serious as-built problems. Minor shortcuts that are kind of not helpful. This is actually incorrect. There is no such feature as this bump at point eight. There is nothing that can be identified as that. The edge of a creek, which is the ordinary high water mark, which is where they flagged, is a curve through that whole area. There's no jog at all. I have no idea what that is. The, this says that GPS is accurate within two meters. That might be part of it, if it really went nuts. Maybe when they were putting this in the software to print this attractive map, they put the 30-foot right away up against the property line, maybe, and that was changed in 84. Maybe they put that on the wrong side. Maybe that should have been the other way. Anyhow, this is not accurate at all. It makes the lot look much narrower than it actually is, and it's as bad enough as it is, but this really makes it underdeveloped.
Mr. Reese, just, you have about 10 minutes left for your presentation, so if you'll just keep that in mind.
I suspect we need to get a real as-built with dimensions. There is no problem with septic. I have 100-foot separation for where the drain field goes, drain field would go where the test hole goes. It has to be within 30 feet of that. I've got plenty of room to do that and still stay 100 feet from the edge of the creek. Everybody at the city, of course, was very polite and helpful, and actually encouraged me in every phone call, until I get to denial, and it may have to do with the problems with this GPS thing, which is just simply wrong. This is the only, as to number one, this is the only skinny lot in the area. This lot, all three of these lots, were subbed right in 84 by the city, whom they were putting in the green belt. They cut all of these lots in two, and that's where it came from. And this lot is really narrow. It's in a place where, and it's not like any of the other lots in the neighborhood. Number two, that's a physical problem with the lot. The exceptional undue hardship, nobody else has to go to what's, there is a place wide enough to build, it's wet, it's back behind about 30 feet of huge trees. Everybody else on the creek has a clear view of the creek. That's why you get a lot on the creek. It's not self-imposed. I just don't understand that argument. If a self-imposed problem is that you bought the lot, I tell you what, the law is not that bizarre. That doesn't make sense. I didn't do anything to cause the problem I have, of course, apart from somebody else. The lot is too skinny. It was done in 84, you know, and they're drawn lines on paper. To say that that's self-imposed makes no sense to me. Number six, doesn't affect health or safety. We're talking about encroaching on a stream setback and not being able to put a proper septic drain field in. They were both false. In my original application, as well as its supplement, I never said I wanted encroaching on a stream setback. I don't know where it comes from. The idea that we can't put in a foundation without, like in the backhoe on there, yeah, I suppose that's true. Look at page 15.
And could you summarize, please, Mr. Reese?
My summary is, the reasons for denial make no sense to me. If you look at page 15, what they're trying to protect, the stream non-disturbance area, is a road. It is just like this floor right here. On it are some little fetal bed lines and dead leaves. It has been used as a road since long before I bought the property. It's within five feet of the creek. I wouldn't even want to be on that. But I tell you what, if I drove a backhoe there and dug a foot in, you're going to be sick, see the trap from the wheel tomorrow, plus, and eight foot back, so from the 25-foot setback, eight feet of back, 30 feet of house. I'm not anywhere close to that, twice. The Waterways people have volunteered to me, something I didn't know, which you can't leave it over the non-disturbance area. I'm not even asking to do that. So there's no threat there. The septic drain field is easily 100 feet away. Make sure the commission says it has to be 100 feet away. That's the law. The map is incorrect.
Mr. Reese, you're two and a half minutes over your time, so we'll have to have you end there. Are there questions of the applicant by the board?
Is this a buildable lot without a variance, in your opinion?
It's buildable, but it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be treated the way everybody else on the creek is treated. Everybody else, everybody, not only is, you know, on the creek, have a view of the creek. I'm telling you, maybe half of them are encroaching easily into a 25-foot setback, and I'm not asking to do that at all. And it would be more difficult. The low part, I mean, the buildable spot, which is down at the other end, I mean, it's wide enough to be out of the setbacks, is really wet. The only place the well can be is way down at the west end, at east 200 feet away. That's not really okay to have your well that far away from you. It's a funny-shaped lot, and the right place to pass is down there. Nobody cares. I mean, I'm not affecting anybody. I mean, I'm, I'm not affecting anybody, including the only guy that whined about it in the email, I mean, last night, he signed it, when he saw what I was trying to do. Now, I'm perfectly, I understand I need to get a, a reasonable as-built, and this is just too confusing.
Um, I guess the other question I have is that, on the, uh, signatures that you received, was one from the property owner directly adjacent to your property, to the east, I believe?
Yeah, that's me. Uh, and it's where I live.
Oh, okay.
That's my house. I'm in favor of this, very much.
So, you, you own this vacant property?
I own absolutely those apps, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions of the applicant? I, I do have a couple of questions, and, and as you can see, staff is, um, has, um, concerns on several, several of the standards have not been met. The fifty-by-eighty footprint, we, we as a board are acting on what's, you, the applicant, have provided to us, and the burden of proof does rest, rest with you to find that all seven standards are met. And so, what we see is a fifty-by-eighty footprint, um, going right up against the, this creek And I appreciate the fact that you want to come in early to see what, you know, what would be allowed before you, uh, go any further. However, looking at it from our perspective, or specifically from my perspective, there's a lot of missing information in order to grant this variance. Why the fifty-by-eighty foot, foot, footprint is my, my first question.
Um, it's mainly the action, because I went in there with some house plans that we found that have turned into blueprints, and we wanted to expand it, and then the contractor said, "What about setbacks?" And I, I had no idea, so I'm assuming we have to draw the house in a shape that would fit whatever you guys allow me to do. If I don't get a variance, the house is going to be about this wide, and we're going to have to walk around sideways, and it, it won't work. Uh, I want a reasonable house, uh, and, uh, Sandy called to bathe and lick it, which is all the papers with the grass from space, and the, the house, house garage is thirty feet by sixty feet, right? Yeah, thirty by sixty, and then there would be an eight-foot deck on that, so thirty-eight by sixty. My intention isn't to even cantilever over the creek setback, although apparently that's okay with Waterways people. I hadn't thought of that as their idea. And I, and I do want it up to the twenty-five-foot creek non-disturbance area, and to say you can't do that, again, is bizarre. If you can't do that, then there has to be more of a setback than twenty-five feet. The law is twenty-five feet. I mean, I put it two feet that's high, I'm thinking about eight feet back, but there's no legal reason why I can't, I don't need a variance from that to put it right on twenty-five feet. That's a bizarre argument. I don't, I don't know where that comes from. It's not right.
Okay, um, and I, I did see in the staff packet where, um, the soils reported indicated that the groundwater, I believe, was at two feet on the, on the east side of the property, when they were trying to do their septic...
Yeah, that's, that's terrible, yeah.
So, I understand your, your desire to, to move the building to the west, but, but again, um, once you, um, if we act on this as, as submitted, it's a fifty-by-eighty footprint, and you can do, you can go right up to that creek setback for the full length of that footprint that you provided. So, so, I'm understanding what you're saying, but if, from our perspective...
I mean, I mean, I've been more clear tonight, certainly put in a condition that, yeah, you can do this, but it, it can't be more than thirty by sixty with an eight, plus an eight-foot deck. I mean, you can fix that with a cond, with a condition, I would assume.
Well, typically, it's the, it's the applicant who provides the, the request for the variance. Uh, we aren't here to design your house or your footprint for you, but to, uh...
I know, but I, I, I thought I had explained in here that I, I don't know where to put the house, because I don't know how much room I'm going to have somewhere in this area. I wouldn't say I'm going to cover the, I don't like a sixteen hundred square foot house, two-story, so, I mean, it's not going to, you know, I want a adequate landscape garage so we can put everything we own in it.
Okay. Mr. Burkhardt, any questions?
Um, I guess, uh, one comment, that I think the, the fifty-by-eighty foot, um, footprint is a, a bit of a red herring here, in that, in the variance request, all we're doing is increasing, or decreasing the setbacks. That once he has his as-built and his setback set, he's free to build within whatever's left over. And there's nothing in, uh, our conditions of approval that speaks to a fifty-by-eighty foot footprint, so I think that's a little bit, kind of like, off the mark in terms of consideration. But my question is, um, it, it appears, and I asked this of, of Mr. Barrett, but it appears that, um, the request to encroach the rear setback up to ten feet and maintaining a setback of forty feet is in error, in that, um, I think the petitioner just told us that he's looking for, um, a twenty-five-foot rear yard setback and a twenty-five-foot
Mr. Chair, Mr. Burkhardt, I, I think what Mr. Reese had said is he thought the setback was twenty feet, but the drawing on page three, the one in color, um, does show the house, the footprint, rather, approximately ten feet into the rear yard setback. You, you can see that Mr. Reese has drawn, um, both the front end and the rear yard setbacks, and where the footprint overlaps, the rear yard setback at its greatest point of encroachment, it's about ten feet.
Well, I think we need to get the language right, since we don't have, or either that or we postpone this case and, and get an as-built.
There's another thing, I, I, your question has reminded me, I think the first time I drew it, and there's a twenty-five-foot setback and then a fifty, fifty-foot yard setback, I thought that was like twenty-five feet, or that's the creek setback, and then there's another twenty-five feet. That's not correct. The creek setback is twenty-five feet from the edge of the creek, uh, ordinary high water. The fifty-foot setback starts in the middle of the creek, which is about twelve feet away, further away, so, uh, the, the rear yard setback edge is about ten or fifteen feet from the edge of the creek setback. You know, I'm not using that much of the rear yard setback, because you start at different places between this...
Is this, is this written variance request on page one, is that accurate?
The, um...
If, if, if we grant the variance, this will be the letter of what you're allowed to do. It doesn't refer to any fifty-by-eighty foot, um, land. It doesn't refer to, um, directly to the creek. It refers to the, the lot line.
Yeah. Another thing, and I, and I obviously don't understand much, but, uh, the note here about, uh, whether the lot is legal width, uh, I don't understand that. I mean, maybe this is correct. I know you can use the adjacent right-of-way to take care of, uh, you know, septic, uh, square footage issues and things like that. I don't know that that really applies to the hundred-and-fifty-foot minimum lot width in the ordinance. I mean, this lot is not a hundred-and-fifty-feet wide at any point. If you get to use the road to meet that fine, it just, it just surprises me.
But encroaching the rear setback by up to ten feet, um, with a, a setback of forty feet, that is accurate?
I believe that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vig, am I going crazy, or do you have a comment that you took, took back?
Um, Mr. Reese spoke to what I was going to point out, in case it hadn't occurred to everybody else, but that those two dimensions are measured from different starting points.
Okay.
And it was confusing to me as I was preparing for this, till I understood what was going on. So, thank you for pointing that out.
If, if, when I try to develop that other lot, it's going to be right on.
Are there other questions of the applicant? Mrs. Croft.
This, this is the night of the, the as-built wars. Would you feel comfortable taking the time to get a more accurate as-built so we understand and you understand exactly where, where we are on this before you take action?
Certainly. I, I don't have a problem with that. I, when, when the new, the colorful thing came in from Waterways, I, uh, got in a panic, and I, I thought, you know, my septic thing has disappeared into, you know, nowhere, and this is all an impossible project. I invested twenty-two dollars on a hundred-foot tape to try to figure out what they were talking about. Uh, turns out, it really still takes two people to figure out this thing. I called surveyors. The surveyors are not available this time of year, they're booked up for weeks. Talked to two of them, and told them my problem, and then they, you know, they told me they didn't have time for, you know, two or three weeks, or whatever it was they said. Both of them, when I told them the problem, the first thing they said was, with emotion, "The city doesn't have any qualified surveyors on sta, on staff. What do you mean they're telling you where a line is?" I mean, it was, surprised me. I mean, and I, I don't know what that means. I don't know how GPS works. Clearly, this, if something, something wrong with the software, something wrong with the GPS, a wrong assumption, this map is way off. These are not the dimensions.
Well, that's why I worry if we act on this, and then what you end up with is not even what you...
Yeah, if you say it's okay, and I get out there and I'm ready to dig a drain field, and there's no hundred-foot, I mean, that's not a problem, yeah.
Because, you know, on that fifty-foot versus twenty-five-foot, we were, you know, the experience is written to give you the ten-foot encroachment into the fifty-foot rear yard setback. It is not to encroach into twenty-five-foot setback on the river, so there's...
I have no intention, I have no intention of doing that, although, you should be aware that, you know, this, it's, it's a road. The picture on page fifteen shows the road and the creek is like that far away from it. It's that entire road is wider than a car, and there are car tracks on it two or three times a year. I don't know who's in there, somebody...
Right, well, I just wanted you to be aware that, that it is for one and not the other, and, and it doesn't exempt you from, from following that one still. I mean, even if we do give...
I mean, I, I don't want to be in the twenty-five-foot nine-to-seven zone.
Okay, and also, I just wanted to clarify something you'd said about didn't understand being self-imposed.
Yeah.
I mean, that the hardship being self-imposed is that, you know, it, it is up to you on where you're choosing to put the house and how big the house is. And everything that's related to that is something that is coming from you, and it's not arising from the property. So, in the sense, that is what we're talking about, of being self-imposed, and that it's your desire to have the house with a better view and closer to the, to the creek than in the wet part. So, that's just a point.
And with a, with a wall within a reasonable distance. The, where the, where the septic was approved and, and passed is the only place on that lot where, where that could happen, so...
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board?
Mr. Chairman, um...
Yes, Mr. Fink.
Just to follow up on Ms. Croft's question, I mean, would you, I'd be more comfortable with an accurate as-built. I mean, would you be willing to get us more accurate, uh, new, an accurate as-built?
Right. And should I, well, I mean, we got the answer, I mean, the person doing the blueprints with the way we, we ran with the, you know, expanding the plan we wanted, said thirty by sixty feet, so we'll put that in as a real thing and with an eight-foot deck on it, I won't do it with that, so, so we're not doing, uh, it wouldn't be vague anymore. Here's where I'm going to put the house, here's the shape of the house.
And, uh, staff has a handout, uh, Mr. Barrett, they're, the handout for, for the as-bolt that, that we're looking for, the information that we'd be looking for, is something that could be available to the applicant. I guess procedurally, um, I'm assuming we need a motion, but, uh, we have not had the public hearing yet. I'm looking for a little direction here.
We can still, we can postpone at this stage and just reopen it next time for the public hearing, as long as we postpone to a date certain. We don't have to re-advertise.
Thank you. Mr. Burkhardt?
I move that we postpone this case to a time where the applicant can supply to staff, uh, as-built that sufficiently describes the, the size and configuration of the lot.
I would suggest August.
And I guess I didn't suggest a specific date because you've indicated that getting a surveyor to do the work...
It's a schedule, which I got it.
Yes.
I think that seems better, you know?
I have a second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Ron, thank you for being on the, on the button, too. Uh, Mr. Burkhardt?
Um, I think, uh, yes, a, an as-built that correctly describes a lot, I think, would be invaluable in this case, so I intend to support the motion.
Mr. Fink?
I concur with his comment. I mean, it seems really critical to this variance request.
Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing, seeing none, um, Mr. Vig, was that a sigh, or did you have a, a comment?
I was only going, going to suggest that the watershed management might, might verify their location of the bank line so that there's no dispute about where that is, where the surveyor...
Well, I should, I should get the, the survey and let them work from that, I mean, that's...
I think it's in the petitioner's best interest to have his surveyor. They flagged, you said that they flagged the...
The lines flagged, yeah, but the watercolor ones flagged, the family is identified.
Uh, I guess what I'm wondering is, though, did the watershed management people flag what they determined to be the, the bank?
The, 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 the high water mark, so clearly flagged, yeah.
Okay, then that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
Are there, are there other comments? I'm sorry, any other comments? And is there any objection to the motion to postpone? Seeing none, this, uh, that motion passes and, uh, this case is postponed? Till, did we, I'm sorry, did we have a date? Mr. Chairman, August twelfth, till August twelfth? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll, we'll go, uh, one more case, and we'll take a break. Moving on, um, to our, our next case, the case is two thousand ten zero five six. The petitioner is the Matneuska Telephone Association. Is the applicant here? We've gotten a wave indicating so. Could, uh, who will be presenting this case for staff?
Um, Mr. Chair, um, I will, in place of, uh, Mary A. Torre.
Thank you, Mr. McGlafflin. Would you, uh, please speak to the sufficiency of notice?
On May nineteenth, two thousand ten, there were seventy public hearing notices mailed. At the time this report was written, no responses were received, also no community council response has been received. There, I'll point the, um, the board to a handout. One late comment was received. It's in a separate handout, and it, um, is in opposition to the, uh, granting the variance.
Thank you, Mr. McGlafflin. Would you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I point the, the board to the as-built on page three. Also, there's a zoning map, um, on page two. There's an aerial photo on page eight. It appears that the, the, um, uh, storage building in question, uh, there, there's not another, a conforming location on the lot for, uh, for the, for the storage building. The surrounding property was not developed, um, at the time that this storage, uh, building was built also. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow an existing storage structure to encroach fifteen point nine feet into a thirty-foot rear yard setback, and to encroach fifteen feet into the required twenty-foot, um, north side yard setback. Uh, this is a PLI-owned, uh, property. The storage structure was constructed in nineteen ninety-two and does not predate zoning. It's a violation of the PLI, uh, yard setbacks. The planning department finds that, um, standard one is substantially met. Uh, lot twenty-nine A is an oddly shaped, six-sided lot having four side yards. According to the nineteen ninety-two staff analysis of the minor amendment to the de facto conditional use to construct a storage building, case, Planning and Zoning Commission case ninety-two dash zero two four, quote, "It appears that constructing the storage shed in a conforming manner is not possible, as the shed would..." shed in a conforming manner is not possible as the shed would then be located in the path of traffic entering the parking area," end quote. The analysis also pointed out, given, this is the staff analysis in nineteen ninety-two, given the configuration of the lot, this location provides a secure fenced area to guard against vandalism and theft. The Planning and Zoning Commission determined that this was the most feasible location for the storage shed and that yard variances were needed. Standard, the planning department finds that standard two is substantially met. The buildable area is severely limited by existing structures and the fact that this is a six-sided lot. The department finds that standard three may be met. Although the hardship is self-imposed, the configuration of the subject's six-sided lot is, um, is not. The existing central office and cell tower and the maneuvering room and circulation needed for telephone servicing vehicles leaves no other viable location for the storage shed of telephone equipment such as support posts and pedestals. The department finds that standard four is met. The side and rear yards of the property have a six-foot tall fence that has been in existence since nineteen ninety-two. The height of the storage building is approximately fifteen feet tall, less than the height of a single-family dwelling. Standard five is met. The requested variance is dimensional, not a use variance. The yard encroachment does not change the character of the PLI zoning district. The use is permitted in the PLI district. Standard six is met. The variance does not adversely affect fire department safety standards, clear vision areas, air quality, water quality, noise levels. Standard seven is met. Planning and zoning commission approved the construction of this storage building as a minor amendment to a de facto conditional use permit for a telephone utility facility in nineteen ninety-two and determined that this is the most feasible location for the storage shed while reorganizing, while recognizing that yard variances were needed. There are no conforming onsite locations. This is the minimum variance. The department finds that all the standards have been met and recommends approval of the variances, subject to conditions one and two on page seven. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Ms. Croft?
Um, yes, I guess I'm, uh, would like to know what happened in nineteen ninety-two and if they recognized this in nineteen ninety-two, why are we seeing this now and after it was built?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Croft, um, it's the planning department's policy that they, that if a developer intends to build a building in an area that encroaches, that they obtain a zoning variance from this board prior to submitting a, um, an application for, in this case, a conditional use permit. That was not done in this case. I don't know why, but, so, um, uh... So, this utility substation or this utility facility, it's not defined very well in Title twenty-one, so a utility substation and a utility facility are treated the same. So, you need a conditional use permit to, for a public facility or for a facility in the PLI district. And since it predated, the existing structures predated zoning, they, they had a de facto approval, okay? So, they had grandfather rights. They had a, an approved site plan, de facto, okay? They went to the Planning and Zoning Commission seeking a conditional use permit to add a shed and/or a storage building and it was approved and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it presupposing that, that either you would approve these encroachments or that, um, that the applicant would have to come and ask for these, uh, these encroachment variances. That was not done and I can't remember off the top of my head how this was discovered, but I think that sometime recently they sought to do something else and it was discovered and now they're, um, asking for the variances. I hope that answers, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, uh, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Burkhart?
Um, not to harp on the as-built question, but once again, it would be nice to see, especially staff, that if we could have the whole piece of property on a dimensioned piece of property rather than just the rear part of the lot on page three.
Thank you.
Burkhart, it's noted. And one other small item, I believe the lot is seven-sided, not six-sided.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Are there other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the petitioner's representative come forward, please?
May I just make a comment? We did get a drawing that had everything on the property. It's a very large drawing.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Burkhart, do you have that?
Um, I don't know if I...
It's attached to the photographs, the color photographs.
Thank you.
Now, could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Bonnie Bailey, B.A.I.L.Y.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. You have ten minutes for your presentation.
I'd like to speak to finding three is why we're here now. What happened back in nineteen ninety-one, when the engineering plans were drawn up for the shed, they ran with the impression that the setbacks were ten feet and fifteen feet. The setbacks were administered, which increased in nineteen eighty-eight by an administrative order. Unfortunately, our engineering department didn't realize that and drew up the plans that went out for good. In the meantime, the state department applies for the conditional use for the shed, which they received, but they didn't pick up the increased setback requirements until we applied for non-conforming use because we want to add another antenna to our existing tower. It was pointing out that we didn't need the setbacks for the shed, so that's why we're here today.
Does that conclude your presentation, Ms. Bailey?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
Okay, um, thank you. Are there other questions of the petitioner by the board? Seeing none, does staff have any questions of the petitioner?
No, we do not.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Bailey. If you'll have a seat, we'll open the, uh, open the public hearing on this case. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing none, no one, the public hearing is closed. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Ms. Bailey has indicated she has, there is no rebuttal. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, in the case two thousand ten dash zero five six, I move that we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four zero point zero two zero point F to allow an existing storage structure to encroach fifteen point nine feet into the thirty-foot rear yard setback and fifteen feet into the required twenty-five-foot north yard setback in the PLI district, subject to the two conditions noted on page seven of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Fink, you have indicated you would second that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I concur with staff's findings in standard number one, that that is substantially met for the unusual seven-sided lot configuration and, uh, the fact that there are no other places to put that without encroaching into the needed parking and access. Standard number two, strict application of the code would create an undue hardship. I agree with staff's findings that, um, that is substantially met as well. The structure's predate zoning and, uh, the fact that the, uh, the storage shed was built under, at a time when some of the setbacks may have been changing, I think, is, uh, part of the hardship there that would be caused to strictly apply the standard. I agree with staff's findings on standard three, that it, well, I believe it is actually met mainly for the reason of, as the petitioner explained, with the timing of the conditional use and construction of the storage building. Standard four, I agree that, uh, that standard is met in that it, granting the variance would not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. Standard five, I agree, is met. As staff found, that it will not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six, granting the variance would not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. I believe that that is met as well. It doesn't affect fire department safety standards, traffic, uh, vision areas or any of the other agencies within the municipal government that reviewed it. And then standard seven, that granting the variance is the minimum that would make possibly reasonable use of the land and I agree that staff's findings, I concur with them on, on standard seven, that it is met. It's the most feasible location for the storage shed, realizing that, uh, there are no conforming onsite locations on this piece of property. And for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with Mr. Vig's comments, adopting the staff's recommendations with his additional comments, particularly with respect to standard three.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there other comments from any of the board members? Any other comments? Is there... Mr. Burkhart, was that a written form for a comment or...
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Burkhart?
Um, I believe that, um, the PLI setbacks are very, very generous and I think in a lot of respects, those are meant to apply to, uh, public buildings, um, that, um, you know, city hall, libraries, you know, things like that. I've been sketching on the, the plot plan here now that I've, I've found that at the large scale. And if you sketch out all the setbacks here, the actual conforming area is probably something, you know, close to thirty percent of the overall lot area, especially because of the strange configuration of this lot, um, twenty-nine A. And I'm not even sure if these are legal conforming lots in terms that the minimum lot requirements are supposed to be fifteen thousand square feet and I'm not sure if individually these are. In any case, I think that, um, the setback requirements here of the adjacent properties, the residential, are probably closer to what should be the, the standard on this. So, I, I think this meets the intent of the ordinance and in this particular case, I, I don't know if PLI really envisioned this type of, um, you know, work structure for those setback requirements, so I intend to support the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Are there any other comments from any board members? Is there any objection from the, any of the board members to this motion? There's been no indication of objection to the motion, so with that, the motion passes I should read that regarding this, this variance, any party aggrieved by this decision has thirty days to appeal to Superior Court. The third day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. Before we take a short break, I forgot and I apologize to mention, we have six cases on our agenda tonight. The last case, case two thousand ten zero six nine, the petitioner is Mount Vernon Condominium Association. That case has been postponed to July eighth, two thousand ten. So, anyone here tonight to speak to that case, two thousand ten zero six nine, that has been postponed. We'll take a short, short break and then we'll come back and hear our last two cases of the evening. We are back in session and we are moving on to our next case, which is case two thousand ten zero five nine. The petitioner, Nelson and Sandy Vasquez, is the petitioner. They've indicated they're present. Staff, could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was posted and advertised. Seventy-one public hearing notices were mailed for the item. We have received no responses to the request from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This request is for three variances in order to allow six dwelling units on a property. There is an existing six-unit apartment house on a lot of seven thousand square feet. Under the zoning district, a lot size of ninety-five hundred square feet is required in order to allow a six-plex, so that is the first variance to waive the twenty-five hundred square feet that the property is short in order to allow a six-plex. The second variance is related. It is to reduce the requirement for usable yard area. Twenty-four hundred square feet of usable yard area are required for a six-plex, that's four hundred square feet per unit, and the property is able to provide approximately fourteen hundred and fifty square feet of usable yard area. And the third variance, again related, is to provide ten spaces when the code requirement is for eleven parking spaces. The as-built for the property is on page two and I'll go into a little bit more history on this one than usual because it is a bit convoluted. The subject property is a legal lot in ER three district. It does not have the width or area to allow more than four units. Seven thousand square feet, which is fifty by one hundred and forty feet. VR three requires lots for single-family, up to four units, to be six thousand square feet in size and fifty feet wide. Five units would require a lot size of eighty-five hundred square feet and have to be seventy-five feet wide and for the six units, it must be ninety-five hundred square feet and seventy-five feet wide. The property is a corner lot. Orca Street is the primary front yard. Eleventh Avenue is the secondary front yard. The other yards are side yards. The R three zoning district was in place in nineteen sixty-five in this area of town and construction on the building began in nineteen sixty-eight. Apparently, five units were planned by the owner at the time, although only four units would have been permitted. We don't have building plans from that time, but the property appraiser records from nineteen sixty-eight do not indicate anything out of the ordinary. In nineteen sixty-nine, property appraiser records indicate that the basement was to be unfinished, meaning that the building would be a four-plex, two units on the main floor, two units on the upper floor and an unfinished daylight basement. In nineteen seventy-six, there's a statement from the property appraiser's office that the basement is finished, but there is no mention of living units in the basement. And then three years later, in seventy-nine, property appraiser records indicate there is an unfinished sixth apartment unit in the basement. At that time, apparently, the property appraiser was going to assess the owner for six units. There are a few notes in the computer record that the owner filed an appeal. We don't have records of the appeal, but the few notes there are seem to indicate... We don't have records of the appeal, but the few notes there are seem to indicate the owner was claiming he had only five units, because the sixth unit at the time of discovery was actually unfinished. We do not know, unfortunately, how that appeal turned out. There are no records for it. Municipal light and power utility records indicate that there was a apartment number six since at least 1996. There is a 1997 ASBelt which indicates a two-story four-plex. A 2002 recertification of that 97 ASBelt indicates a two-and-a-half-story six-plex. We believe that 97 ASBelt is simply an error. The structure has not changed shape. It's just that unless you went inside, you might suspect that the daylight basement is nothing more than a daylight basement, and is not actually two dwelling units. A private appraisal that was done for the previous owner, who turns out to have been the seller in this case, done in September of '02, that private appraisal indicates there were five units in the building, but the appraiser calls out to the owner that the zoning and size of the lot only permit four units, and that he therefore is going to base his appraisal on retrofitting the building to have only four units. The current owners, Mr. and Mrs. Vasquez, purchased the property a month later, in October of '02, and have stated that the property was a six-plex at that time. Going to treat the variances in two groups. Variance is one and two, which are the lot area and the variance for usable yard area, and then variance number three would be separate and deal with just the parking. So regarding variances one and two, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, et cetera, that are not applicable to other land in the same district, excuse me. The standard is not met. There is no unusual physical feature directly related to the need for the variance. The lot is a rectangle, some are in size and shape to others in the neighborhood. The property is a corner lot with two street frontages, but this is neither unusable and unusual in the neighborhood. It has nothing to do with the lot area, the size of the property, and it is not related to the need for the variance. The frontage is actually, the dual frontage is actually worked to the advantage of the property, as it allows for multiple access for parking. The lot is simply not the legal size and width for six dwelling units, and it is unable to provide the required parking or usable yard area. Standard two, because of the circumstances, strict application would create exceptional or undue hardship, and would deprive the applicant of common enjoyment rights. The standard is not met. Strict interpretation of Title 21 would limit construction to a four-plex. Other properties in the neighborhood appear to be conforming in terms of the number of units and the lot size on which those buildings are located. We did find several variances throughout that neighborhood for parking space count, usable yard area, and so forth, but we did not find any variances for lot size and the number of units. Under the terms of the code, the owner is not being deprived of rights. He simply is limited to a four-plex instead of a six-plex. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is not met. Part A, the lot has nothing physically unusual about it, nothing to distinguish it. It is similar in size and shape to other lots in the neighborhood. Part B, the need for the variance is a result of the actions of the applicants. Based on property appraiser records, at least as early as 1979, it appears the building is being remodeled to contain at least six units. An appraisal in 2002, which is a month before, September '02, which is a month before the Vasquez's purchased the property, indicates that the building was a five-plex and needed to be converted back to a four-plex to be legal. The owners did purchase the property in October of '02 and have stated that they saw a six-plex at that time. We don't have any other information regarding any due diligence Mr. and Mrs. Vasquez may have done as part of their research before purchasing the property. Standard number four, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect adjacent properties and their use. The standard's partially met. There are no fire separation issues between buildings. Parking areas will have to be modified slightly in order to address some safety issues. The usable yard area is short of the required amount by 40%, and the application does state that these units are targeted to or for small families with one or two children. So that has the potential to be an issue. We did receive one negative public hearing comment. I think I said there were none initially. There must have been one coming in late. Standard number five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code and will not change the character of the zoning district. That standard is met. The request is numerical and dimensional. It's not a use variance. A six-plex is permitted. The lot is just not large enough for it. The reason the standard is met and the character of the area is not changed is because structures in this neighborhood range from single-family home to a ten-plex. It's a general mix, and is the kind of thing you would expect in the R3 district that has been around for a long time. It's grown up in all manner of what's permitted. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. This standard is partially met. In addition to the items directing or directed at the property itself and the adjacent properties, the lot size, the usable yard, and the amount of parking, additionally, there are issues that could overflow, and they are not variances, because they are either grandfathered or able to get an administrative waiver, and I'll go into those in a minute. They are turning and maneuvering area for the property and overflow parking for multifamily. Those types of issues do have the possibility of spilling over and affecting the wider area, especially traffic, parking, and turning and maneuvering. Standard number seven, the variance, granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. The standard is not met. A reasonable use is a four-plex. The need of three variances and administrative waiver for overflow parking and a grandfathering of the turning and maneuvering area amount to five items that are necessary to make this property function. We cannot consider that to be a minimum variance. Moving on to variance number three, the number of parking spaces. Two standards only required for parking. The first is that the applicant can demonstrate that the amount of parking required by code is in excess of what is actually required to serve the existing use. This standard does appear to be met. The property's been around a long time. We did a very thorough search for parking and traffic complaints and did not find any. So although no parking study was submitted, the amount of parking provided does seem to function, although we would like to make some modifications for safety's sake. The traffic department and the planning department believe that standard number one has been met as conditioned. Part two of a parking variance is that spillover parking onto other properties will be avoided, and the intent here is that an applicant can show some area on the property that is excess yard or something that can be used for parking should standard one turn out not to be correct and additional parking is necessary. This standard is not met. There is literally no area on the property for additional parking that would not negatively affect other issues of the property and require other variances. So since standard number two is not met, the department must also recommend denial on that item. Both variances one and two, for the lot area and the usable yard, the department recommends denial, and as I said, variance three, standard number two for parking is not met. However, should the board find for approval, we have conditions on pages 12 and 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I have two questions. On our packet, the page 56, posting affidavit, there's no copy of the posting affidavit. Has that been received?
Yes, sir. I just had it late and forgot to put it in the package.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is with regard to the parking, and it's two questions. One, are the 10 spaces, or I'm sorry, are the 11 spaces required for a six-plex or for a, what number of spaces are required for a six-plex and a four-plex?
It's 11 for the six-plex.
That's for the six-plex.
The four, somebody who has a calculator or does higher math in their heads, it's 1.75 parking spaces per unit. 1.75 times four, rounded up to the next whole number.
Around eight, how's that?
There we go.
Mr. Burkhart, can you check me on my math?
Four times four is seven.
Okay. The attorney has corrected me. Thank you, Mr. Fink. And I got a second question or comment on page six at the bottom. I see regarding the overflow parking, which was the second item to determine if the variance should be granted, on the bottom of page six, it says, "The traffic engineer has the authority to allow 10% of the overflow parking on the street," and that waiver was granted on May 12th. But in spite of that, you're still saying that the second condition for variance three is not met? Could you go into a little bit of explanation there, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Overflow parking is an area where the traffic engineer has the authority, and that is what we conventionally call guest parking, actually. It's a requirement that grew out of the site condo ordinance, that structures three units and above provide guest parking, what they call overflow parking. That's different than standard number two of a parking variance, where we're talking about providing the required parking based on the number of units.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there other questions of staff? Ms. Croft.
Mr. Barrett, I'd just like to confirm that, as it currently exists, the usable yard area does not even meet the requirements for a four-plex?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Croft, four times four is 16. That's correct. It's about 150 square feet short for a four-plex.
Okay. And we're trying to fit two more, two more units worth of space in there. Okay, that's all I want to confirm. Thank you.
Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, with regard to variance request number one and standard number five, that the variance wouldn't change the character of the zoning district, that it's a dimensional or numerical request and not a use variance. I understand that, but I wonder, by allowing a six-plex or higher density than what would otherwise be permitted, is that in itself a use variance?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, no. We, the department gives that a pretty strict interpretation. If the use is allowed in the district, regardless of how many problems the property has, then it's not a use variance, and since six-plexes are allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the petitioner come forward, please? Hello, could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, I'm Sandra Vasquez, West LA, V-A-S-Q-U-E-Z.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Would it be possible to bypass out this color photo of the owner?
Yes, we need to, well, need to retain that for our files for 30 days. Sure. Yeah, and we have some color photos. Is this something in addition?
Something that I've made.
Yeah, we'll just mark them and hand them out then. Thanks.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Ms. Vasquez, you can proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen and gentle ladies, for this opportunity, and thank you for your time and service. This has been a very long and challenging, very sleepless night, road for us, and it all began in 2002. We purchased this home basically with our life savings. My husband was just really excited that we found this property. When we came to this property, we were told that it was a legal six-plex, that whoever then owned it had used it and modified it to fit their need, as, you know, as they occupied it. And so perhaps we were just extremely naive, and perhaps we were just overly excited. But we had asked our attorney to do, to verify, and what they got back to us was, yes, it is a six-plex, and the tax record shows that it's six-plex. So we said, okay. We didn't have any idea with the, we didn't find out about the zoning and usable lot area until recently, until a lot of this moving, we really cared to. And just to address, before I address the actual seven requirements, we believe, just from researching, we believe the original, the very first original owner was actually, was also a builder, and we believe that this person must have intended a six-plex and approved the plans as a six-plex. Before the zoning went into effect in 1965, we believe that he, also at that time, we believed he was approved as a six-plex. This person, who was the original builder, also built it himself and took an enormous amount of time in completing the project. And I say that because if you look at the history, he took many, 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 many years in building this out, and we believe he was approved as a six-plex prior to '65, because everything else meets the requirement. Each unit of the six-plexes are generously sized, 875 square foot, meets all other safety, health requirements, such as the grass, the building height, the size. I'm sorry, I'm trying to come back. And also, that, and so we requested the city for a copy, we tried to locate a copy of the original approved plans, apparently was destroyed by the fire, and so we weren't able to locate that. But that's just sort of what we believe. I mean, we went into the actual seven questions, requirements, the physical circumstances. This property is a, again, corner lot, East 11th Avenue, and it bobs right up against the commercial area, so that everyone yourself, I think, is a little different than all the other properties in this area. It's directly across the airfield. There's linear commercial buildings and warehouses. So this is very different from lots that are in the suburban residential neighborhood There are no other buildings or properties like it that are directly against these commercial buildings and our stuff. I do wish it, due to physical circumstances, this building was designed, built, and looked, feels like a six-plex. When you look at it, it feels like a six-plex. It has two-bedroom, one-bath unit upstairs, and, you know, it's upgraded as a six-plex through since, you know, when it was completed. This area has sort of suffered two-bedroom style design. We feel our property as is is very much within the characteristics. I believe that that's the need for the variance, doesn't mean that violent, desperate zoning regulations. It would just right the very wrong and difficult situation. Because when we came, became aware, we did everything in our power to right the situation. It wasn't like we, you know, we've been paying taxes as a six-plex, and we've hired architects and lawyers, try to, I mean, it's really necessary, but anyways, in the form intent, we believe the law is what not changed as a result of this variance. This is a very unique neighborhood in that it's mixed with similar family residences to commercial, and if you look to elementary school, to park, and from similar family to ten-plus apartment units. I believe the common denominator in this area is smaller families residing in each of these individual units. In terms of the code, I believe, is to provide the fairer community with quality environment where they can raise their families without being overcrowded. We believe we are in compliance. Just today, when we visited the apartment, we saw a couple of children playing outside. And the yard, we have yard in the front and back, and unlike other properties, it's very safe, we have two unique fans that protects them, and they can play in the backyard, that's very well-fenced. And typically, the tenants that have occupied our property are the smaller families, a couple with one or children, if any, just a small family, you know, trying to raise their families, and have been careful. Again, each unit provides only 75 square feet of living space. Each unit has a window in grass, seven to thirty-six to forty inches from the floor, which means that we believe it meets the current safety code. The property meets all of the fire department safety standards, and even the parking spaces provided is more than what it would if it was meant to be designed or planned as a four-plex. So we believe, just the way each unit was designed and parking provided, parking spaces provided, we believe that it was originally intended as a six-plex. Per the county parcel information, this is a low-traffic area, and even while operating as a six-plex and fully occupied, the neighborhood has never suffered heavy traffic or excessive parked vehicles. In fact, we have tenants who don't even own a car. And so at any given time, we can go to the property, and they're not, eleven or ten spaces are not occupied. The site accommodates, take, parking spaces. And Mr. Bob, I think, the traffic director of MRA Traffic, reported to Mr. Barrett, and we know that a check of the crash data for 1998 to 2008 revealed no incidents with this property. The current parking laws, as many of our standards, has few of any options to change.
Go ahead and finish, please.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't get to number seven, but in summary, we, I believe that we've been very conscientious property owners, we've been very careful, and going to smaller families who are responsible, we believe we've been very responsible, and we've taken care of our property really well. We want to be a benefit to the community and not a burden, and I don't believe we've been a burden. Again, this is a very difficult journey, and we will ask that our request is granted.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Yes, Ms. Denny? Can you speak in your microphone?
On page six, it states that a private appraisal was done for the previous owner in September 2002, and at that time, it was identified that it was not a six-plex. What did you base your purchase on if it wasn't the appraisal?
Actually, that's why, when we saw the apartment as a six-plex, we wanted to see it, and we had asked the realtor to go and verify the tax records, and that's when we were told that it is a legal six-plex. It was the, whoever had lived, they used it as their needs were. So if they needed a six-plex, they lived it as a six-plex. If they only needed a five, they only lived it as a five. I don't know why, but that's, that makes sense to me at the time.
But when you went to the bank with the appraisal, didn't it say it was just a five-plex?
They said it was a legal five-plex, for sure, because, you know, they said that it was a, when we saw it, it was a six-plex. And then they said, one record showed it was a five-plex plus basement or something, and then that the tax record showed a six-plex. So we cannot refinance it as a four-plex, we can only do it as a six-plex.
Thank you.
Mr. Wrong? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Vasquez, in your application, there's mention of a prior attempt to rezone. Where does that stand?
That's a long story, but I'll try to keep this really short. When we became aware that this was, we were nonconforming in 2003, first, we had hired an architect, and we asked for our believers in noncomplances, something to Mr. Jerry English, and that was rejected. And so we hired an attorney, because they said, this is your option, this is what you could do. So, and you need to obtain signatures from your neighbors in that block. So we went ahead and tried to obtain signatures, and we needed, I believe, it was seven out of thirteen, or seven out of twelve minimum signatures that were required to, before we can submit it. We have obtained, you know, after a really long time, we obtained seven signatures. And right before we submitted the actual application, our attorney said, well, why don't we do a one last check on the ownership? When we did that, one of the property owners who had seen, that gave us a signature, had sold the property. So we had to obtain a new signature. Then our attorney simply just disappeared, just dropped out of the face of the earth, and wouldn't return our calls, wasn't there for us, wouldn't return any emails. And then, a lot of personal tragedies happened.
The attorney had a nervous breakdown or something, so he was unable to return our calls. Months later, he finally...
Could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Nelson Vasquez, N-E-L-S-O-N, V-A-S-Q-U-E-Z.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
So, I made a mistake when I said months later, some months later, he returned our call finally, so we had to try to get the legal records vote. By that time, there were no running uses. What my lawyer was trying to say was she faced a lot of surgeries, test cancer, so that took a lot of time to get things right, but we wanted to try to do it. So, Mr. Wrong, hopefully that answers your question.
It does, Mr. Wrong. Thank you for the history. I was more interested in interest in resuming that effort, perhaps, not knowing whether or not it would actually remedy the situation. But obviously, you're here today, trying to request a variance, so I'm assuming that you've moved away from the request.
No, we didn't know if this option was available. And so we were told, when we were speaking, when we were contacted by a staff of, I believe, zoning use enforcement, or zoning enforcement officer, who's been incredibly patient with us, gave us, like, these are your options. And so, but we just knew that this was one of the options when we started the whole zoning thing, because our attorney told us that that's what we needed to do.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Seeing none, the staff have any questions of the applicant?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification from Mr. Wrong regarding the rezoning. Whether it was the attorney or the real estate agent, whomever, that's very unfortunate and bad advice. The property does not even qualify to apply for a rezoning. There are two criteria, one of which must be met. Property must be either an acre and three-quarters in size to apply for a rezoning. If it is not an acre and three-quarters in size, the property owner can still apply for a rezoning, but only to a zoning district to which they are adjacent. And this property is surrounded by R3, so it has no option. It was stuck with the variance, and that's very unfortunate that Mr. and Mrs. Vasquez received that advice. That was a terrible waste of time.
A lot of money, too.
Thank you. Excuse me, just, Mr. Barrett, just for clarification, on page three of the staff packet, what's the adjacent, there's a dark line on Orca Street, so there's, it's showing west of Orca is R3. What's the zoning east of?
Apologize, Mr. Chairman, that's I-1, so that wouldn't work for them, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Craft?
I was just wondering if during, during all of this, if you had considered, you know, one of this, the standards we have is the least variance possible, whether you had considered it all a five-plex, or whether, because that is a lesser variance, you wouldn't need the parking variance at that point? If that was something that you had, had thought of at all?
I guess not. I don't know what kind of construction work it would require, but financially, it would be a hardship, only because as it is, we're in the war, and we've not even been able to sell it either, so it's been a really nightmare.
Are there any other questions? I'm seeing none, if you'll have a seat, we'll open the hearing up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would the applicant like to offer any rebuttal? Any comment rebuttal?
I guess not. Well, other, just, just that, it would just be a huge financial burden for us, as it has been, as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
And we're willing to, if it is granted, we are willing to do as they recommend it in terms of putting the, what's that? The, the block?
The real stops.
Sorry, the real stops, and we also want to put the new chain link fence at whatever location they recommend it. And I believe other people or departments, do you have any objections to our request?
Thank you.
Would it be too much to ask a question of the applicant? They gave us this map, I wanted to find out what that was.
Oh, no, that, by all means.
I mean, I think I can deduce what you were trying to show us with this, but can you explain what point you were trying to make with this map?
That, basically, that there's a property that's up to the commercial area, the airfield, and then also there are a lot of R3s with 7,000 square feet that are above, you know, like six-plexes. So what we're asking isn't unique, we're not asking the board to, you know, do something that is totally not, you know, not, that's not what I'm trying to say. Not consistent with the area.
May I ask a question of staff on that?
Yes.
Do we know how many other properties in this area are nonconforming? I mean, this seems to indicate quite a few.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fink, in looking briefly through the area, I did not find any. So no, I cannot say whether these are grandfathered, whether they're pre-code. I'm afraid not, I don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett, and just as a follow-up, typically, there's not, each case stands on its own merits, however, you know, that is the type of information that does weigh into a different, at different levels for different board members. Is there a, what's the procedure for looking into that besides your cursory look there? Is there a more formal procedure for investigating that, or is that what you did?
I drove through the neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, talked to the property appraiser's office, what would be involved, a foot survey. We'd get out, walk it, we'd count units, we'd verify that the numbers are correct. Then we'd go back to the computer records and any building permit records we could find to determine whether they were pre-code or not. It's just a matter of time and money.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
May I say something to that? When I submitted the application, I had listed the parcel numbers to these properties and their addresses, and their zoning, and their lot size. Number four, my question number, answer number four. So I believe it would have been easy to verify.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
Thank you.
With that, the mat arrest with the board. Could I have a positive motion regarding this case, please?
Mr. Barrett, and just as a follow-up, typically, there's not, each case stands on its own merits. However, you know, that is the type of information that does weigh into a different, at different levels for different board members. Is there a, what's the procedure for looking into that besides your cursory look there? Is there a more formal procedure for investigating that, or is that what you did?
I drove through the neighborhood, Mr. Chairman, talked to the property priser's office, what would be involved, a foot survey. We'd get out, walk it, we'd count units, we'd verify that the numbers are correct. Then we go back to the computer records and any building permit records we could find to determine whether they were pre-code or not. It's just a matter of time and money.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
May I say something to that? When I submitted the application, I have listed the parcel numbers to these properties and their addresses and their zoning and their lot size. Number four, my question number, answer number four. So, I believe it would have been easy to verify.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
Thank you.
With that, the mat arrest with the board. Could I have a positive motion regarding to this case, please? That's an indication that this is a tough, tough case for people. Mr. Burkhart, thank you. Care to make your motion?
In case 2010-059, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.40.050F, lot dimensions to allow an apartment house with six dwelling units on a lot of 7,000 square feet, when the minimum required lot size for a six-plex is 9,500 square feet, a shortage of 2,500 square feet, or 26 percent, and have a lot width of 50 feet, when 75-foot lot width is required. Variance number two, from AMC 21.40.050, to allow 1,452 square feet of usable yard area, when the legal requirement for usable yard area is 2,400 square feet for a six-plex. And three, from AMC 21.40.45.080, to provide 10 parking spaces when the requirement is for 11 spaces. Subject to apartment reputations one, two, three, four, and five on pages 12 and 13 of the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Vig, you've indicated you seconded motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Burkhart, will you speak to your motion, please?
Though I'm sympathetic to the property owners and them getting fat advice and counsel from numerous people along the way, I don't think that the seven standards are substantially met. I don't think standard number one is met in terms of the lots very similar to many others in the, in the area, in terms of size and configuration. I don't think standard, standard two may be met, that the petitioner has indicated that there are quite a few other properties in the neighborhood that are, might not meet the criteria in terms of land area, but as our chair indicated, we consider each individual case on its own merits. That it may be that some of these are grandfathered, in terms of non-conforming use. There might have possibly been variance granted for others, or others may be not in conformance with the code. We can't determine that with the basis of the information that we've been giving. So, that may be met. Standard number three, I think in terms of the chain of ownership, that this is a self-imposed hardship. It wasn't the doing of this property owner directly, but prior property owners, when the fifth and sixth units were added and had, in the non-conforming letter, when indicates the years where electric meters were added and those additional units were brought online. So, even though it wasn't this particular property owner, the variance goes with the land. It would transfer from this property owner to other property owners, and so that line of responsibility extends back from past property owners to this property owner. I think standard four, I agree with staff, is at least partially met. I don't think that variance would adversely affect the adjacent property in that this is a fairly dense area here. Petitioner has testified that the parking situation hasn't been a problem. In some areas of town like this, people don't have as many vehicles, use public transportation, so parking may not be an issue. So, that might be partially met. Standard five, I agree with staff that the standard is met, that the residential use is allowed, a six-plex would be allowed for correctly sized property parcels, but this one doesn't. But in that respect, that the use is allowed within the zoning district, so that is met. Standard five, I agree with staff, is partially met, that I'm concerned with the lack of the usable yard area for kids. I think the density for this size lot, I think, is too large. So, I think if it is partially met, it's also partially not met. And variance granted, the minimum variance will grasp, will make possible a reasonable use of the land. I don't believe that that is met in that, in the past, that the property was occupied as possibly originally a four-plex or a five-plex, and then converted into a six-plex with the additional electric meters added over the years. As far as the variance and the standards for that, I agree with staff that standard number one is met, but I agree with staff also that spillover parking, that that standard has not been met. So, I guess this is a difficult case. If this was strictly decided in terms of what I feel is the intent of these property owners, I wouldn't have any doubt in passing the variance request, but we're legally bound by the seven standards here, and I don't believe that the seven standards are met in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the petitioner for a thorough presentation, and I concur with many of Mr. Burkhart's comments. And with regard to standard number one, I'm kind of on the fence on about the proximity of this property or adjacency to its, to different zoning classification of the east industrial lands. I'd be interested in other board members' perspective on that, but I think that might be a bit of a different circumstance on this property. I think the standard number two could be argued a hardship, significant hardship would be imposed on the property owner to strictly apply this code, relying on six units to the decision to make the purchase, and whether the due diligence could have turned up the legal standing or not, I don't know, but certainly can understand how decision was made on a basis of six units being, generating revenue for them. With regard to the yard area, I believe it may be relevant that within two blocks of this site is Fairview Park, a wide-open area for children to recreate in, and presumably there are safe walking routes between properties along these streets to the school, and I think that's something that we should consider. As Mr. Burkhart said, it is a very difficult case, and I think the owners have done a good job to keep it in a presentable and attractive condition, and I also think that it would, if in fact there are other units of six, six-plex units on 7,000 square foot lots, I think I would be inclined to grant this variance on the basis of others being in existence in this neighborhood. But I'm interested in other board members' opinions on these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there other comments from board members?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vig, you raised some interesting points that I'd like to ponder for just a few minutes. Maybe I can bide some time, think about them while I'm talking at the same time, and allow the board members perhaps to do the same. In hearing the petitioner's case after staff's presentation and Mr. Burkhart's interpretation of the findings, through that process, I tried to do some rough calculations on occupancy and how that would affect the variance request, if the petitioner were to be agreeable to a five-plex unit, and whether or not that would fit for the lot size, and given that all the nine parking spaces roughly would be required, and it still doesn't quite fit based on my calculations. So, as Mr. Burkhart pointed out, it does appear to be overbuilt for the lot size. But that said, I'm still trying to calm it up within limits of the standards that were given to find mitigating factors like Mr. Vig pointed out, to in fact grant the variance. So, I think I've successfully said something without saying anything, and we'll stop talking.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Are there any other comments from any of the board members?
I think, I hope the petitioner recognizes we're struggling with this case. We, we as a board hear cases from different petitioners. You all have done a very good job of presenting your case, and it's difficult when, you seem like a nice couple, and this is my personal opinion, voting on something like this, where you've come forward being very upfront. However, we have the seven standards that we have to find that are met, and I think as Mr. Ron just stated, as I heard your presentation, I have no, I am in complete agreement with you about the six-plex and the size of that as a six-plex. However, what I struggle with is it just doesn't fit on the lot. The lot size doesn't support that six-plex. And so, we often find this, not just for six-plexes, but single-family houses, when they're overbuilt, there's a certain size that goes along with any lot. So, I, as much as, this is not a, my vote is not a representation on you at all, however, it's a vote on the seven standards, and I hope you recognize that we're struggling with that as a board. So, unfortunately, I cannot support the motion, and as, I'm in agreement with the standards of, or the comments that Mr. Burkhart provided. Are there any other comments from the board members? Seeing none. Let's see, how are we doing this? Let's, please vote. Is that all of them? That motion failed by a vote of with seven, seven oh and zero yes votes. I do need to read that any party agreed by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The third-day appeal period commences to run upon the written mailing, upon the mailing of the written decision. With that, that brings us to our last case of the evening, which is case number 2010-067. The applicant is Fred Myers Storrs, Inc., Representative Barcoson Consulting Engineers, Bob McBeal, is the applicant here. Yes, okay, thank you. And could we have the staff presentation, please?
Mr. Chair, on March 19th, 2010, 80 public hearing notices were mailed at this time. At the time the report was written, one response was received in opposition to granting the parking variance. That comment from the public, it can be found on page 22 of your packets. No comments were received from the Midtown and Rogers Park Community Councils.
Thank you, Mr. McGloughlin. Could you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner is seeking a variance from off-street parking requirements for retail establishments to allow 88 fewer spaces than the required number, 543, which is a 16.2% reduction, parking reduction. Fred Myers is seeking approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission to add a gas station to this large commercial real estate, I'm sorry, large commercial retail establishment site. The proposed site plan that will be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission needs these parking, parking reduction variance. The Planning and Zoning Commission will review the site plan on Monday, that's June 14. If the board, just for, you know, larger issues, so that the board's aware of their role in this, if the, if the board grants the parking variance, then the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear the large commercial real estate, large commercial establishment site plan review. If the board denies the parking variance, then the case could not go forward in the Planning and Zoning Commission. The department finds that standard one is met. The intent of this standard is that the applicant can demonstrate the amount of parking required by current code is in excess of what is actually required to serve the existing or proposed use. Code requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross building area. The site plan shows 88 fewer parking spaces than required, than the required number of 542, which is a 16.2% reduction. A parking study conducted by the petitioner shows that 384 spaces were filled at peak period of use. The parking study, the Kittleson Report, can be found on page 39 of your packet. That's the parking study. The bottom of page 40 shows that number of, the maximum number of spaces used during peak period being 384 spaces. The traffic department has stated that they support the parking reduction to 454 spaces. Their comments are found on page 13 of the packet. The standard, or the department supports, the department finds that standard two is also met. In this case, standard one appears to be met, and spillover parking will not be an issue. The planning department therefore recommends approval of the parking variance, subject to conditions one through three on page four of your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioner is here also. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGloughlin. Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Fink.
On page 39, the project description talks about a decrease of overall parking from 520 stalls to 498 stalls, a net loss of 22 parking spots, but the request, so would that be the actual reduction, and the request is taking into account a current nonconformity? I guess I'm confused, because that doesn't track with the...
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Fink. The Kittleson Report was based on an earlier site plan and a different sort of configuration, but their parking study had to do with if a gas station is added to this site, then how many parking spaces would be required. They found that at peak period with a gas station, there would only be a need for, you know, these 300 and, 300 and, oh, sorry, under current circumstances, only 384 spaces are used. That's with the Garden Center, which also uses spaces. So, the recommendation from the, from this, these, from the parking study is that a variance, well, let's see... well, let's see. The petitioner asked for the parking study to be based on a different number of parking reduction. And rather than have the parking study redone with a new number, we've just used this parking study to show as evidence that the maximum number of parking spaces needed is 384.
May I follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fink.
So how many parking spaces are there now currently? And if you want, I can wait and ask this of the presenters.
The, thank you, Mr. Fink. I don't have that number. The...
What I'm getting at, and again, I'll save this for the presenters. I want to know how many are there currently and how many we'd be losing. I'm curious about.
The site supports, it's a good question. I'm sorry I don't have the answer. The site, the required number is 543. The, the actual number is less than that, and I'm not sure how many less than that it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Burkhart.
Yes, I'm looking on page five of the packet, and I believe that's the final overall site plan. It looks like the blow-up in the center top of that sheet, north of Northern Lights Boulevard, is a blow-up detail of what appears to be possibly a pedestrian path and landscape islands. Do what I see in terms of the oblong areas of those, on the site plan are those landscape areas that are being added and displacing what are existing parking spaces?
That's correct.
Okay. And so that appears to me roughly to about 30 parking spaces here are being taken away in terms of adding the pedestrian amenities and the landscaping.
That is correct. The gas station would replace the existing Garden Center and the landscaping and the pedestrian walkway, and the gas station would take away spaces from the existing site.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Croft.
I have a couple, well, first a numbers question. The request on the front page says 543 spaces. One of the conditions of approval is that they change their drawing to say 542 spaces are required. And there's a discrepancy on whether the final one would, final proposed design would do 554, 454, 455. Just wanted to clarify which of those is correct. And the petitioner can do that. The second question just has to do with the posting affidavit. It was in February. I don't know if that, I don't know how that works. It's usually posted right immediately prior to the meeting. Is that...
Through the chair, Ms. Croft, the posting, the original application for this big-box review, this site plan review occurred in, you know, several months ago. And that case was postponed in order to resolve the, or in order to obtain a parking reduction. I believe that the number, and we can verify this with the applicant, I believe that the site plan has gone through many changes, and this is a typo. Staff made a mistake in putting 543. The variance request, I believe, is to 540. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I, when staff reviewed this, staff found that the addition of a gas station with the little retail spot added another parking space and brought the required parking space based on 300 square feet of building area to one space. The addition of the gas station added one more space. However, when you add the Fred Myers building plus the gas station with this little retail place within the gas station, it does not bring it up to the total building area, does not bring it up one more parking space. It's under that. So the required number of parking spaces is 542. It's not 543 as it states on the first page. That's a mistake. So the last page is correct, and I apologize for that error.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of standard number two, there, from what I can tell is there is no area that's been identified on the site as spillover parking or as something that can be converted later if parking demand is shown to be higher than this. In previous cases, we've seen, you know, that an area has been set aside. And it sounds like this is saying, well, we don't have spillover parking because we won't have any spillover.
I'm not certain of your question, Ms. Croft, but I would respond. I think from what I understood that the petitioner, so the planning department, you know, told Fred Myers that based on their site plan, they needed to seek a parking reduction. They didn't think they needed the parking reduction because they were just placing a building in the location of a, of a garden center. And they believed that any parking reduction that was needed could be handled administratively because the traffic engineer has the authority to administratively reduce parking required by 10%. But staff really sort of took it to them and looked at historical information and prior to this, this garden center and through some research, determined that, that more parking was required than what the applicant, with their knowledge of the site, was required to provide. And so that's when they postponed the case, and that's when they provide, well, that's when they provided us with a parking study that showed that at maximum peak time, they only needed 382 spaces provided.
Right, and so that seems to me to satisfy standard one. But standard two still requires, as I understand it, that additional area be identified if, in case the, you know, the estimates and all the analysis prove to be incorrect.
Well, staff's interpretation of standard two is that if, if the, if the traffic engineer determines that, that spillover parking would be a problem, that, that they show a location for that. In this case, the maximum number of parking spaces that are needed is 300, has been shown by parking study to be needed is 382. They're providing 454, some sixty-some, I'm not very good at math, some sixty-some spaces more than the maximum needed at peak time. Therefore, standard number two is met because there is no need for excess of, for spillover parking area.
Okay, it's just not the way that we've, that we've seen it calculated or done before. It seems it's almost as if standard two is being waived as opposed to being met. But we can, we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Croft. Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McGlaughlin, are there requirements in the code for the number of required parking spaces to be provided through, through winter periods that would, in other words, preclude snow storage from being present on them for long periods of time that would effectively render them useless in the winter?
Through the chair, no. This site is required to haul all of their snow off-site within 72 hours. That's a requirement of the, the big-box review of, it's an existing requirement, and it'll be, if, if the board found that, approved the parking reduction, and this goes to a big-box review to add the gas station, it'll be reaffirmed. It'll be a condition of approval in, in that review also, that all, that there be no storage of snow on-site.
Thank you. And so we would not need to attach that as a condition of our approval here because it would be handled at a different, that's crack mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there other questions of, of staff at the board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name's Tom Hibbs, G.I.B.B.O.N.S., and I'm the Director of Real Estate for Fred Myers Stores. And I'd just like to say a few words before I turn it over to my consultants here, but...
And just really quickly, Mr. Hibbs, you have 10 minutes combined for your, for the entire applicant team, petitioner team.
I understand. Thank you. One thing I just wanted to, you know, make a real strong point of is convenience is absolutely critical to the success of our business. And the top of the list, parking, circulation, and access are the most important to, you know, make our business convenient for our customers. And if for one moment we thought that we wouldn't have sufficient parking, or this request would compromise, you know, the convenience, convenient parkings of our customer, we wouldn't be here. It's absolutely critical for us to be able to provide, you know, adequate parking. And another part of this thing, anyway, convenience, I just got a little confused here, convenience is that the fuel stations has become almost a, just a really demanding part of our business for our customers. They are expecting, you know, it's part of our reward program. And the stores that do not have our fuel facilities, our number-one request from the customers is, you know, when are we going to get a fuel system, you know, fuel station in there? It's very critical for us to get that. And with that said, I think I'll turn it over to my consultant, Anthony, to take it from here.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Anthony Yee, last name spelt Y.I. I think I answered a couple of the board members' questions. Based on the numbers at least that I have from the staff report and also from the Barkhousen Engineering who's working on the site plan, the existing parking supply is 520. The code requirement is 542, and the proposed supply is 454. So in, I guess in rough numbers, between the difference between the code and the proposed, it's approximately 88 space difference. And then from what's existing today, from what would be proposed, is about 66. So I hope that answers a couple of your questions. Just to kind of elaborate a little bit on the parking study that we've done, we worked very closely with the municipality of Anchorage specifically on the parking study. As per required by the Muni code, we looked at it Friday and Saturday for three consecutive weekends. And so we were out there approximately between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on three consecutive Fridays and three consecutive Saturdays in March and April, and conducted a thorough study on a sort of a one-hourly basis. So basically, we had folks out there in different zones counting the parking lot and doing supply and demand numbers, well, demand numbers on an hourly basis. And within the Kittleson Report, you'll see some tables in there that kind of have a breakdown of the different zones and then per hour what that demand is. And really, the summary of staff is very accurate. So that's really the quick and a nutshell, the process that was taken in terms of the actual parking demand study.
Thank you, Mr. Yee. So maybe if you want to finish your presentation, then we'll hit question, are there any presentation by the petitioner team?
My name is Robert McNeil, Senior Planner at Barkhousen Engineers. My last name is spelled M.C.N.E.I.L.L. Alluding to some of the comments that Francis made, we did work hand-in-hand with the MNI Traffic Department. Bob Knievel was very useful in helping us shape the final site plan, as well as Scott Thomas and Mark Palmer from ADOF's team as well. We had to satisfy several different aspects of the, shall we say, a difficult site. We had to try to incorporate various landscape amenities and pedestrian pathways to not only beautify the site but also improve pedestrian circulation. And at the same time, we had to try to meet as large parking demand as possible. Kittleson's numbers certainly reinforce the fact that we have met that objective. The, we believe the landscaping and pedestrian improvements also help channel pedestrian traffic away from vehicular circulation on-site, and overall, the entire package works very well together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBeal. Are there questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Burkhart.
I see there's quite a bit of parking behind the store. Is that employee parking?
As far as we can tell, primarily, it was used for employees, but it's not specifically reserved for. One of the options that we did present to the MNI's traffic engineers would have required another variance, which would have been a reduction in the space dimension and to a complex-sized stall and reserving the back park for employee spaces only. But the MNI was uncomfortable with that, and we ended up with the, the various option that we have right now.
Yeah, I guess I did notice, I think, on one of the aerial photographs, I was surprised that there were as many cars in the rear of the store. I guess my other question in terms of the parking studies and the analysis for three weekends in the springtime, is that representative? Is there, are there seasonal fluctuations? Is that the right sampling that will bear out?
Yeah, definitely there are seasonal variations, just like, you know, if we were to do the study out there a couple of days before Christmas, obviously, there'd be a very high-peak demand. We did have that extensive conversation with municipality and DOT staff, and both agencies as well as Kittleson Associates felt that that wasn't appropriate time. That looked at average peak conditions, not the, sort of the peaks in front of holidays, but not the general lows as well. But it represented an average, a good average peak condition for that facility.
Thank you. Mr. Vig.
Forgive me if this is covered in your parking study, but I'm curious, when you, when you did the demand study of the existing store configuration and determined the number was 384, I understand that part. When you add a gas station as your customers' demand or would like to have, I can understand that being an enhancement. And so do you have studies from other stores where you've added the gas station and have a sense of how much additional demand that creates in your parking lot? Is that covered in the study?
It is covered in the study, but not intuitively directly from, let's say, specific stores within average Alaska or even Alaska in itself. Parking, there's a couple of different sources that we've used. Fred Myers is really the front runner a lot on the parking and trip generation data. They've actually hired consultants to go out and actually have Fred Myers-specific data, albeit, you know, the majority of the times, they're not focused directly on a specific area. So some of the studies, all of the studies were not done in Alaska. They're more than likely done in the Lower 48. But to answer your question, the parking information, the demand for the actual parking is sort of broken down a couple of fold. The majority of the users for, at least the Fred Myers fuel stations, they're folks that are already shopping at the center today. So that's a certain large percentage of the actual users. And so that parking basically is absorbed by folks that are already there. So I'm there, I want to go grocery shopping, I go grocery shopping, I'm already parked. And while I'm leaving or prior to actually grocery shopping, I'll go ahead and get gas and go park. So that's what... go ahead and get gas and go park, so that's what we call an internal trip, meaning that my primary purpose was either for the gas station or for shopping at Fred Meyer, but I'm a, I'm a single trip, and my intent is to park anyways, so that trip has already been there regardless of that, uh, grow, of that, um, fuel station is there to begin with. Uh, the second type of trip that gas stations in general do are what are called pass-by trips, let's say that I'm driving from home and I'm going to work, and I realize that I'm low on gas, I'll physically go in and fill up my tank, and then I'll actually leave the site, I won't necessarily sit there and park or do anything like that, unless my original intent was to shop at Fred Meyer's, but then I'm back to that internal trip, the first trip that I'm talking about. Uh, the third type of trip that's generated with, um, the majority of land uses and especially gas stations is, let's say that I am intending to go get gas, just because I realize I am sitting in my home and I'm low on gas and I need to drive early in the morning, but I may not want to get the gas in the morning, I just might as well do it right now, and I realize, hey, traditionally, if I were to just go get gas, I would go to, uh, gas station X, well, if the Fred Meyer fuel station is there and they're closer, then I'm actually going to go to that, that fuel station and then go back home, that's what's called a diverted trip, but the intent is still to go get gas and leave, and going back to the first point, if I, if I did want to get gas and then go shopping, I'm still in that first trip that I've mentioned, that internal trip, so intuitively what gas stations do in part of these, um, locations, just like sort of what you guys see, probably see at Costco, Costco fuel stations, is you're going to be a trip that's going to be parking there to begin with to shop, or you're going to be getting gas and you're going to be leaving, and you'll never be parking to begin with.
So there's not a fourth element to that, where now that this site has a gas station, instead of going to Safeway to do my grocery shopping, I'm going to go to Fred Meyer because it's got the same kind of groceries I need, but-
No, that's an excellent point, yeah, excellent-
But now I can buy my gas there, so I'm going to go there instead.
Absolutely, and that's why I think the parking study's so critical, because as we went out there, um, I think as the staff report showed and as, as reported in the Kittleson report, there is that buffer difference, um, I think the, the capacity, or at least that, the, the demand that was shown, I believe, from the record was three hundred and eighty-four, and what's being supplied is four hundred and fifty-four, and so you're absolutely right, um, board member, that there is that type of trip as well, uh, that type of trip is very low in percentage versus what was actually, uh, uh, in relation to the, the three other trip types that I was mentioning.
Okay, I-
I think the other, I think the other point, yeah, I think the other point that may also offset it is, is with that, that garden center that was there, with that being removed as well, and the potential trips there, so those are also, um, minor factors that play into it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. E., who, Mr. E., who are the neighbors to the east of your-
Um, that I may not answer, I'm not quite sure who the, adjoining, I know there's a Village Inn, I believe-
Yeah, yeah, Village Inn, and then you have another side, the Wendy's, and then Tesoro.
There's a, could you speak that into, speak into the microphone, that, or you respond into the microphone?
To the east, I believe it's a Village Inn, but I'm not sure what the other uses are, I, I didn't investigate what the, uh, adjacent use to the east was, but maybe somebody from my-
I believe there's a, an office building, I think Nana might be the owner of that.
Can you access that parking lot from the Fred Meyer property?
My understanding is that you cannot.
Okay, I mean, I, I think, I agree, um, this, I guess is a comment, and then I'll follow with a question with Mr. Gibbons' comment, and I'm sure Fred Meyer's would not do something that inhibited the convenience of their customers or drew customers in, but, um, my concern would be burdening neighbors' parking or, or parking to your, your business neighbors or residential, residential areas, I don't see that you would burden any residential areas in that lot, but I'm curious if your neighbors, um, to the east of you have expressed any concern, or if you've been in any conversations with them.
Uh, there is, uh, no access to the neighbors on the east, that's the backside of our building where the employee parking.
Okay.
It is, and there's, yeah, there is absolutely no crossover access to either of those properties.
What, what separates them, is that a, and I, I will admit, I shop at this Fred Meyer's a lot, and it seems to me like your parking lot is always really packed, so you're studying-
There's, there's a curb, and, but there's also the, the parking stalls where the employees park, uh, along their, if, if you, um, the page is at the site plan, uh, page-
Look, look, page five, is that-
Yes, uh-huh.
So that, that separation, that's a, is it a fence or a barrier wall, or what is it?
Um, you know, I can't recall if there's a fence there or not, uh, but I know that there's, there is a fence, no?
There is no fence around that, that perimeter, basically what you hear is some variable space of anything from pavement in some areas, although there's very little, it's meaning a small dirt strip ranging anywhere from three to perhaps five feet in width, depending on, on where you are on, on that particular part of the site.
But cars can't drip across that?
No, no.
And, um, as far as the garden center, I assume that you're not moving it, I mean, that would take up a lot of parking space, you're just getting rid of the garden center, at least the one that was in the parking?
That is correct, it's, it's going away.
And I'm just curious, are you going to have one inside, or you're getting rid of your garden center?
Um, it, it, the garden center is going away, yes.
Okay, okay, that's a bummer, okay. I don't, I don't have a-
It was unfortunate that the merchandisers looked at it, you know, it operates basically two months out of the year, and the fuel center's pretty much year-round.
Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll follow up Mr. Fink's comments and, and admit that I too shop at this Fred Meyer and am surprised by the parking study, I would like to point out, uh, Mr. Peterson's comment on page twenty-two of the staff, um, packet that corroborates that as well, um, again, just personal observation appears and, um, but worth noting nonetheless. My question is in regards to, uh, pedestrian, um, activity on the southwest portion of the lot, there's a fast food restaurant there and I've witnessed, uh, pedestrian activity traveling between that site and the Fred Meyer, were any considerations made, um, to accommodate pedestrian activity on that portion of the site?
We looked into the possibility of pedestrian pathways throughout the site in various configurations, in that particular location, we did not find any, any reasonable alternative that would work, that would, uh, cross the two drive aisles, run the Wendy's driveway, and other of the actual, uh, Fred Meyer, uh, parking driver.
Last time I want my french fries and milk, I may need to drive between the two locations.
Well, I've, I've ridden there twice, and I've seen, uh, traffic, uh, going through, but I've never seen any pedestrians, but I, that, um, twice is, I'm sure, nothing compared to some of what you've seen.
Just real quickly, that, I, I forgot to disclose, I did grab a burger at the Wendy's this evening before, but I did not realize, um, that, that we'd be acting on the adjacent property. Ms. Croft?
I too shop at Fred Meyer's, I'm, I'm not afraid to admit, but, um, and again, I'm, I'm surprised at the parking counts here, and that's why I was sort of worried about that, the standard two on where spill over parking does go, um, and I just wanted to make a comment that on page fifteen of the packet in the parking study, I know that maximum average may have been four, three eighty-four, but the maximum use was four hundred and twenty-nine spaces, which is only twenty-five less than what they're proposing, and that the number of four fifty-four includes all the parking behind the, and to the side of the store that I don't think many customers think of as parking for customers, they think of it as, as employee or, or, um, delivery or, or other, other parking, so I just wanted to throw out that four twenty-nine number.
Thank you, Ms. Croft, Ms. Denny?
I do occasionally shop at that Fred Meyer's, although the other one's closer, one on Diamond, um, the problem that I have with that particular Fred Meyer's is not parking, it's traffic flow, it does seem to be rather congested, pretty much every time I've been there, is there some, um, address to, um, more defined traffic flow through that parking lot, especially with the additional traffic pattern with the gas station?
Absolutely, and I think that was, you know, in addition to parking, that was the primary issue concern that we've worked with many, many months with the MOA and the DOT, um, should this, uh, board approve this parking variance on Monday, will we go extensively as part of the site and design review, talking about the access changes, but if you don't mind, I'd love to give this board a little overview of sort of what the improvements are, or at least, maybe I can lay out some of the issues that we've seen there, also with the DOT and the MOA and the proposed changes for the site, and I think the majority of the congestion starts at that Benson driveway, uh, the-
And Mr. E., if you-
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sure it'd be nice to hear, but if you give us a condensed version, because again, that, that was not-
Absolutely, so I, I think, what we've, what we've found through our studies, uh, is the majority of the congestion on-site occurs specifically at that Benson driveway, which is a left and left-out, meaning if you're driving on Benson, you must take a left into the site, and if you're leaving that driveway, you must turn left out, and that's a little bit atypical, because now the folks that want to exit the site, they not only have to wait for a gap in traffic, but the folks are actually on Benson, they actually have to wait, uh, for a gap in traffic for folks that are turning from Benson into the driveway, that creates quite a bit of queuing, because there is a lot of traffic that's coming in and out of there, um, that was sort of one of the issues that we saw there, also, a lot of the queuing will stem toward, as vehicles entered the site from that Benson driveway, and as they started going northbound in that first drive aisle, we saw two interesting phenomenons, the first one was, is if you see in the site plan along the, um, I guess in that drive aisle, along the right side, there's some pair, there's some diagonal parking spaces there, and the majority of those, I believe, are handicap parking spaces, if not all, um, one of the phenomenons that we did see is that as folks either waited for a driver to leave one of those spaces, they sort of stalled in that drive aisle, and that caused a lot of congestion and some queue spilled backs back into the site, another phenomenon that we saw as well was folks that were going northbound in that drive aisle that I mentioned, um, you've noticed that there's probably a lot of queuing that wants to leave the site from that Benson driveway, and as you know, there isn't a lot of ability to do that, because there's so, so much steady traffic on Benson and entering the site, and as a driver, as you're going north in that driveway, if you wanted to turn into one of the drive aisles, a lot of times you couldn't, because that outbound queue was so far back, that you were really stuck in limbo, and so, long story short, what we did was we worked with the Muni and the Department of Transportation to come up with a plan, and the plan that we've identified, uh, thus far, is to actually separate out those inbound and outbound movements at Benson, and actually create two separate driveways, there would be a separate inbound driveway and a separate outbound driveway, where the existing driveway is today, that will be the outbound driveway, that will remain pretty much as is, except for the inbound movement will be eliminated, the inbound movement will happen just prior to that movement, so there is no conflict between the two, and what we propose is that inbound movement, what we, what we would call a free-flow movement, meaning that they would have priority to enter the site, and then basically disperse through the parking field, um, unimpeded.
Thank you, are there any other questions of the petitioner? Thank you, seeing none, um, do staff have any questions of the petitioner?
Um, there was some discussion about pedestrian access from the Wendy's site, and, uh, there is a separated pathway that runs along the south side of Benson Boulevard.
Thank you, um, with that, the public hearing is open, is there anyone from the public wishing to testify, if you would come forward, please? Can you state and spell your name for the record?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Charles Sturley, S.T.U.R.Y.
And you have, uh, three minutes.
So, um, we're usually managed up at Tesoro, and, uh, just wanted to come up here and comment that, uh, um, recently we've been working with the municipality to develop the site ourselves, uh, in Anchorage, and, uh, the biggest issue we faced with, uh, the development of this site has been the parking aspect, and, uh, it's taken us to last frankly six to eight weeks, we've been working almost exclusively to meet the city's standard for parking, and, uh, we recognize the importance of doing something like that, and, uh, by all means, we look for a balanced comparative environment when we do business, anywhere we do business, and we hope that, uh, this board here, we look to maintain competitive balance, um, between us and, for example, Fred Meyer, um, when we're trying to develop sites, and therefore, we're looking for you, please, to maintain the same standards throughout our competitors in this field, that's my comment.
Um, thank you, Mr. Sturley, um, was that just a statement, do you, uh, do you, are you supporting this variance, or you?
Well, I think we hope to see the same standard applied, so to all, um, competitors in the marketplace, and, uh, I mean, I think that's business, um, throughout, that's, that's part of business in everyday life, so frankly, we are hoping that you look at the standards that apply to us, or they should apply to every single, like, competitor, and that's what we're advocating, so, and I hope you will give time and consideration to.
Okay, um, Mr. Burkhardt? Have you ever, have you ever had a problem with your property with Fred Meyer customers parking there?
Um, I, not exactly, not probably, we have a very few parking spaces, and they're going to be, um, as you access off of, uh, Stewart Highway there, that's where our parking spaces are, um, I gotta say, I can't say that I've typically seen many vehicles there, that's about the last place people would park.
And I guess with the, uh, the MapCo across the street changing into a Walgreens, hopefully there'll be enough, uh, gas business for both Fred Meyer and Tesoro.
Good competitions, good.
Any, uh, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any further rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does the applicant have any further rebuttal, any rebuttal? They have indicated by a shake of the head, no, so with that, the matter rests with the board, could I please have a positive motion from the board? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four five point zero eight zero point M, off-street parking requirements for retail establishments, to allow eighty-eight fewer than required, the number of, require, to allow eighty-eight fewer than the required number of four hundred and, five hundred and forty-three parking spaces, which is a sixteen point two percent reduction contingent on the conditions laid out on page four, that the variance, number one variance, should become effective upon the filing of a notice of zoning action, the board's resolution on the site plan with the State of Alaska Recorder's Office, that they correct the overall site plan, the sheet to show the correct parking requirement is five hundred and forty-two spaces, and that the approved variance is to allow a parking space requirement of four hundred and fifty-four spaces, as is shown in this report and in the application and drawing submitted by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Fink, Ms. Croft, you've indicated you would second that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Croft, Mr. Fink, would you speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would concur with the staff recommendations, that the variance for the number of parking spaces, um, well, the, the first standard, a variance for the number of parking spaces shall be granted on the basis of the demonstrated need for parking, um, that standard does appear to be met, they, uh, have submitted a, a study, um, that seems to indicate that, that they seem to have done their homework, so I would concur with staff's comments, that they have met that standard, as to number two, um, that studies indicated they won't have an issue with spill over parking, I believe, you know, I understand Ms. Croft's concerns, um, but also given that site, I don't know where spill over parking would go, I just think their business gets hurt if their parking lot's full, there's not really anywhere to go, so I'm not too concerned with that, um, so I do believe they've met the standard one and, um, standard two, and will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fink, Ms. Croft?
Um, I, I also, um, after consideration, do agree with, with, with staff's findings and intend to support the, the motion, um, I just think on, on number two, um, it's, it's how you'd look at, though carefully look at the study to see really that everything had been taken into consideration, um, and so I concur with, um, Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Ms. Croft, Mr. Burkhardt?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that, in the variance request, uh, that had five hundred and forty-three parking spaces there, but in the conditions that, uh, Mr. Fink enumerated, that the correct parking number there- parking number there, I believe, is 542, so I think that should be consistent on the original motion.
And that, I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Are there any further, just one more? Okay. Ms. Croft, would you concur to that friendly amendment?
Yes.
We've got, we've got, yeah, Mr. Fink had said he, oh, yeah, he's a low talker, yeah. We have the mover and the seconder. Are there any other comments? Is there any objection to the, Mr. Vigan, sorry? Mr. Vigan?
Well, it's probably, probably an academic thing on my part, but I might probably be interested to know what this induced demand might be for additional parking once this reconfiguration happens. I don't know how many more times we might be faced with this, but it would be helpful in future situations if we had a sense of, you know, how much additional parking demand these kinds of things created. I don't, I don't propose to attach a stipulation to this motion, but I guess we'll have to take it on faith that the applicant's testimony about it being a minor percentage of increase is accurate, and if these things continue to come forward, it would be nice to have some validation of the before and after, but I'll leave that to staff to chew on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vigan. One observation, I believe that the municipal traffic engineer position might be coming available, and you might be able to have some direct input in there.
I guess I would note that Cars is doing some renovations at Aurora Village, and I'm curious whether they're going to be doing a fueling station there, too. So maybe there's going to be other competition in the midtown area with additional grocery store fuel stations.
Any further comments from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I was contemplating an amendment regarding the garden center, but I think I'm going to hold off.
Is there any objection to Mr. Fink's original motion and friendly amendments? Seeing none, do we still, I'm sorry, is it still voting?
There's no objection.
So seeing that there were no objections, that will record as a unanimous vote in favor of this variance. Again, for the record, any party aggrieved by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The 30-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. With that, that was the last case on our agenda, on our public hearings' agenda, under reports. I understand we have one new board member, hopefully will be in attendance at the next meeting, so we're slowly crawling towards a full board. Is that correct, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
And now being greedy, any plans for number nine?
I remember speaking at the mayor's office last week, and we did have another name, and I think they were hijacked by another board. I can't recall now, it was so unpleasant, I put it out of my mind.
But it appears that Miss Uzo co-opted somebody else at her law firm to take her place.
Yes, yes. She did, the day she announced.
I know, so I wouldn't be able to just direct my barbs at Mr. Fink anymore, although I am so impressed on the math. He commented on that, that one just forwarded me, actually. Oh, well, man, you just moved way up in my mind. Ethics code training. This is directed towards Ms. Croft, right, after what we found out about her last meeting?
Everyone's received the emails, multiple emails, probably, with regard to the ethics information with the links to the PowerPoint presentation and to the code. Do look at those and review those. In addition, with regard to the disclosure of present economic interest form, the municipal form, it's a one-page form, for clarification, that is to be completed when you are appointed. Then, if there's any change to your economic status, you need to fill it out and turn it in. Then, the next time that you would need to complete that form would be when you're reappointed. So we also need the originals. You can fax them and email them to us, but we need the originals, your signed originals. So I think I have a list here, if anyone's interested.
I turned mine in.
I turned mine at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm...
Yeah, yeah, we all. Yeah, and he's gone, oh.
Got them all.
You got them all? Oh, man.
So, you're all set?
I'm all set, but if Gloria's not happy in the morning, I'm sure the emails will be a-flying.
Well, then, I'll just blame it on you, and I won't be there first thing in the morning, so you can blame it on me.
No, I got, they're here, everybody's in, everybody's done.
I believe Mr. Ron and I were illegal from the start.
Yeah, man. I didn't know I was not...
I shredded any particular, any prior form that you had.
Yeah, that's right, I was hoping to.
And that's much hit, yeah.
All right. Any comments from the other board members?
Mr. Ron?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, about the meeting last week and the issue you brought up about consistency amongst the boards and process and disclosures, and there was mention by Ms. Chambers about something perhaps Jill was working on in terms of parliamentary procedure. Has anything been developed there? Is there a schedule associated with when we might all be consistent?
Well, that's a two-part question there.
It is, it is.
I am working on compiling information. I even have stuff with me, it's not finalized yet. We're doing a couple of things, which I think you may have heard from the meeting, the joint meeting, or the word was passed on, that we are looking at holding a parliamentary session for everyone, and I'll be working on a cheat sheet on things like disclosures and samples. I've already been compiling some different disclosures that different people and different boards have made, so that I can come up with kind of a variety of different types of issues. In addition to that, you'll have a, I've got like the six-point test in the code and things like that, and also working on a sheet for Mr. Cars, an updated sheet on procedures for the meeting and things, and I'll be working on those for probably all the boards and commissions that I'm doing, so be patient, but we are, we'll get there.
Great, thank you very much. And that was a good point. Last week, Fred, I saw the email, that there was, I guess, a boards and commissions meeting, P&amp;Z, UDC, Plating Board, and ZIBA, meeting with the planning director. It was a pretty informal meeting, just trying to kind of let everyone that wanted to bring up their, voice their grievances, or just comments, concerns. Ms. Denny, Mr. Ron, myself were there. The rest of you must not need a free meal that bad, but...
I didn't want to have to listen to your five-minute speech.
Yeah, and by the way, I don't know why I did not get that original email, so I didn't even know what was coming until Mr. Burkhardt sent me a snide comment, but at least I got the attachment. What I came across was, or what I came away with it, that every one of the boards handles disclosures a little differently, but we're working towards standardizing that process. P&amp;Z, there's a reason that people around P&amp;Z, they like to talk and hear themselves talk, is my opinion, and so they kind of dominated the meeting. I don't know, did any of the other board members have any other comments on what they took away?
They did impinge on your five-minute speech.
Yeah, I think I took one minute.
There are a couple people there that allow themselves, like, taking everybody else's time.
But again, pretty informal, and just wanted to get feedback. I did take the opportunity to express my opinions with Mr. Weaver on how boards are handled, short boards, the voting meeting a fully constituted board when, you know, a majority of the fully constituted board of nine, when we have seven members on that have been appointed, and his response to me was, you got to get your friends on the board or something, magically tough, find a way to staff the board, so, but I felt better about making the comment anyway. Any other comments by any of the board members? Seeing none, we're adjourned.